All right. It's a bit after seven, so I'd like to call the August 21st, 2014 Fairfax Planning Commission meeting to order. We'll have a roll call.
Here.
Commissioner is absent and the roll call is fully called absent.
Okay, so we've got five commissioners here tonight. The other two are absent. The next item on the agenda is approval of the agenda. Do we have discussion or a motion for approval?
I think we have elimination.
So do you -- so there was one item where, given the commissioners that are here tonight, we don't meet quorum?
Right. 225 Olima, we're recommending that you continue it to the September meeting, which would be September 18th, I believe.
That would be a -- we need to make a motion, or okay.
Okay, I make a motion to continue. Item number two, 225 Olima, application 14-28 to the September meeting.
Is there a second?
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. So that item will be continued. Are there any other items for discussion? Or can we approve the agenda as amended?
Could you say that again?
So we've continued 225 Olima because of lack of quorum.
Mm-hmm.
And we're ready to -- just want to make sure there's no other comments on the agenda, or I'm asking for a motion to --
Not from staff.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
Is there a second?
A second.
So we have a motion and a second to approve as amended. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None opposed. And we will do our best to speak up as best we can, because I hear the fans in the background, and I can barely hear what's going on up here. So as we move forward, we've got a few things before we get there. So we have the meeting protocol. We have a few folks here tonight, and I expect that we'll have a few items with public comments. So please keep your comments in order. I'll give you three minutes, and I'll let you know as we get to the end of that time. The next item on the agenda is public comments for items not on tonight's agenda. There's a large agenda tonight, but if anybody's here to speak to anything that's not on tonight's agenda, this is your chance. Seeing none, we will close that. Now, we do have consent items. There are two additional consent items on tonight's calendar, 38 Maple and 139 Lansdale. I want to make sure if there's anybody in the public that would like to speak to this that's not in support of those two applications. Are you not in support of it?
No, I just have a minor correction.
Okay, is that something, I don't know if we want to pull it off for staff, or let's hear what it is.
Hear what the correction is.
Okay. Minor correction. Let us know which item it is.
It's item three, 139 Lansdale.
Okay.
My name is Steve Lamb. I live in San Onofre on Laurel Avenue. It's on page two in the discussion section below the table about the fifth line down. The line starts with 4,000 square foot, and I believe that should be 2,500 square foot.
That is correct. That's the parcel size is 2,500 square feet, and I believe it says that somewhere else in the report. So that is incorrect. Yeah, the original parcel was 5,000. It was subdivided, so the parcel is 2,500 square feet. That's a typo. We can --
Okay, so we can deal with that as a typo?
It's shown two paragraphs below that.
As correct.
I'm sorry. Say that again.
The correct square footage is stated two paragraphs below that.
Got it. We'll correct that.
So we'll --
Oh, no, those are similarly assigned.
We can have a motion to approve the consent items with the --
Yeah, it doesn't -- all the calculations were based on a 2,500 square foot parcel, so.
It doesn't affect the application.
Right.
Okay. All right. So anybody else from the public not in favor of these two items? Okay, we'll close that public comment on the consent items. Can I have a motion?
Motion to approve consent items 38 Maple Ave, application 14-27, and 139 Lansdale, application 14-30, as corrected, with the typo corrected on 139 Lansdale.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None opposed. So if you are here tonight for either 38 Maple or 139 Lansdale, those applications are approved as presented with a one minor typo that doesn't affect the project. There still is a 10-day appeal period, so the appeal period is 10 days, $500 fee to town staff, check with town staff before proceeding. So thank you on those two items. And we will move on to our public hearing agenda. Item four tonight on the public hearing items is the draft general plan amendments, and I'm going to let staff take it away.
Yep. So, good evening, members of the Planning Commission. I'm Garrett Toy. I'm the town manager, and since I've been working on this item and other related items for the last five or six months, we thought it'd be appropriate if I just gave the staff report. So again, the item before you is recommendation to the town council on a variety of changes related to a general plan amendment. And perhaps a little background, as you are aware, on August 6th, the city council, after numerous community and public meetings considered the matter, unanimously adopted ordinance 780. And what ordinance 780 did, it repealed ordinance 778. As you know, ordinance 778, among other things, what it did is it rezoned properties from highway commercial to central commercial, rezoned four properties to planned development district PDD, and it rezoned properties what we refer to as PD, or public domain. As part of that process to repeal ordinance 778, the council indicated it wanted to have a fresh start for implementing general plan and housing policies, and this general plan amendment before you tonight is actually going to be that fresh start. The fresh start is meant to address the variety of issues and concerns raised by the community and discussed over the last five, six months, and that's what led to the repeal of ordinance 778. So on July 16th, the council did approve a series of steps for staff to undertake for this fresh start process, and again, that's what's here tonight, that first step in the process, which is this general plan amendment. So as part of this general plan amendment, council wanted staff to go back and do a general plan amendment to remove what we refer to as a Jehovah Witness property from PDD back to its original land use designation. The general plan and the housing element actually never envisioned changing the land use designation. It was just an inadvertent map error, but we need to do a general plan amendment to correct that. Some of the other things the council wanted us to undertake were a variety of corrections to tables to really clarify to the community that those, what we would normally refer to as errata, or maybe corrections to barely provide clarification, but the council wanted to make sure it can be understood that we're doing a general plan amendment to really make those corrections, so there's no confusion over the density levels for specific zoning. There is some concern we're inadvertently increasing zoning for different designations, and we just want to make clear that that was not the case. And so one of the first ones is a general plan, general plan map correction. And in your packet before you, you have a corrected general plan map. And what it does is it takes out the property that we refer to as Jehovah Witness, and it's supposed to take it back from a PDD land use back to its original designation of UR7/10. On the map, although we just noticed right now, it doesn't have the correct color. So that color is going to be the correct color for UR7. So what happens is with it going back to a land use designation UR7, it'll match its current zoning of UR7 and correct that error. Now, the next series of revisions are actually changes to some housing element tables and to some text amendments. And I think the best way to do that is for me to kind of walk you through the tables that are attached to your staff report, and that may make it easier. Plus, I understand some commissioners have pointed out that perhaps staff needs to provide more clarification, and we may have missed some things, and so that definitely would be easier for the commission to point that out to us. And I can explain some things as we move through the process. So if you go to your first table, which I show is table H3, which is general plan land use categories, if you look at that, what you'll see is we added descriptions under typical housing types. So for example, under light commercial, we said residential units require a use permit. So that's just more of a clarification type item. Service commercial, we're actually deleting from the table because residential units aren't allowed under service commercial zoning. Another one is, you have a listing there, it's called residential .25 units per acre. That was always there, but you'll see we added something under zoning district, and we labeled it FPA. And really, all that means is it's, that zoning only exists in what we refer to as the Fairfield Planning Area. That's actually the area outside the town limits, but if it was ever annexed in, or should be annexed in, then it would have this designation. So that's to provide clarification. Under the residential, the next line down, you'll see residential 1 to 6 units per acre. What we did is we corrected the zoning districts, and then the next one down, you'll notice we did residential 7 to 12. We deleted the SFRM, and the reason we did that is while that designation actually exists in the zoning code, there's no parcels in town with that zoning designation, so we took it off the chart. But we can maybe footnote that on the bottom, maybe, just to make clear, you know, this zoning designation wasn't included because there's just no parcels listed to provide some clarification. When it comes to UR7, UR10, you'll notice we separated out UR10, and that's just to provide more clarity as to the density related to that designation, since that was an issue of concern at community meetings. And under public domain, we just want to note that the only residential units allowed it under public domain would be emergency shelters. And so that's what we did on table H3. So I don't know, are there any specific questions on table H3?
I have not so much a question as a clarification for the public, so that .25 units per acre means one house on four acres.
That's correct.
Thank you.
So if you turn to the next page, it's a text amendment. And what we did here is we just made it clear that the only, the purpose of the statement is just to say, in general, the predominant residential zoning is RS6 and RD 5.5-7. That's really the only clarification. We don't really need to put in the, refer to densities, we just thought that made it a little more confusing. If you turn to the next page, that's table H5, and the primary change there was to correct the density listing for UR7 and UR10. UR7 is one unit for every seven acres, and UR10 is one unit for every 10 acres, but what that translates to is .1 per acre under UR10 and .14 per acre under UR7. And under PDD, we just added C note 3. Note 3, it just indicates that a PDD zoning can be less than five acres, but it does take action by the planning commission and town council to do so.
So just so I'm clear, you said that's under PDD. It looks like it's under OA.
Oh, let's see, C note 3. It should, well, the version I have, it says five acres under PDD, and then it says C note 3. It's not lining --
It's just not, it's not lining up under PDD. That's all I'm asking.
Yeah, I think that's meant to be under OA.
Okay. You said under PDD. I'm just trying to make --
Oh, okay. We added C note 3 under PDD. I'm sorry. On the second line, I'm sorry. I don't know if you can see the red lines.
Got it. It's on the first one. Okay.
Yeah, it's not showing up very well. Okay. Then move to table H12. In H12, we just made corrections to the densities under UR10 and UR7, and if you go four lines down, made a correction on the acreage, because it's supposed to be 9.04 acres, not .04 acres. If there are no questions on that, the next page is the opportunity site map that's shown in the housing element. And in there, what we did was in the text, when it came to the Lutheran church site, it says upland residential is seven units to the acre, and we just took that out because that's incorrect, and we just put the designation of UR7, so that the zoning code kind of matches the narrative description, just like the rest of the text does. Okay, and then if we go to the next change, it's objective H1.1, and it's create conditions that will foster development of at least a total of, rather than 108, it's 124 units for persons of variety incomes by 2014. Now, in this one, it was pointed out by Commissioner Green that 108 is used in other areas of the housing element texts on some tables. And actually, I just went back and looked at it, and how it works is 172 is our regional housing need for a 15-year period, and that includes two cycles. That includes the cycle from 2007 to, I should go the other way, sorry. It includes two cycles, 1999 to 2006, which was 64 units, and from 2007 to 2014, it's 108 units. You add the two together, you get 172. However, over that 15-year period, the town has either developed, or is either built, allowed the construction of, or conversion of second units, or it's currently allowed by right the total of 48 units. So when you take the 172, and you take out the 40 units that are currently either been built or allowed by right, you get 124 units that remain to be planned for, and that's how we get the 124 instead of the 108. So are there any questions on that?
So in the general plan on page H7, which says regional housing needs, table H1, regional housing needs determination ABAG 2010, and for Fairfax, the total is 108 in there, that should be 124?
No, actually, what it is, it's just for the, it's a little confusing, because what it is, is it's the 2007, 2014 periods, 108, and right above, I guess that's table H, you might have, the current version has that listed as H2, regional housing needs for '07 to 2014. Table H1 is regional housing needs for 1999 to 2006, and that's 64. So the 64 plus the 108 equal the 172. So this version kind of breaks them out and makes it more clear.
Okay, thanks for that clarification.
Let's see. And then the next change is in the language that addresses PDD, and that's program H4.1.1.6. And what we did was we added changes to clarify what, how this applies, and it only applies to opportunity sites. So what we did was we said reduce the minimum acres for PDD from five acres to one acre, and we said for opportunity sites. And then we said specify that PDD zoned opportunity sites shall be reserved for residential development only at a minimum of 20 units per acre, limited to a maximum of two acres on the Christ Lutheran Church property and 10 Olima Road. So again, the change is just to make it clear that minimum density of 20 units per acre only applies to the two opportunity sites, of which the church limits it to two acres, and that's the revisions that we're recommending.
So I think this kind of raises a, I think it could be very helpful. There's, as you said, in the element, there's an opportunity site master list. So opportunity site is a capital, opportunity site, capital O, capital S, rather than small. And I think what's happened through all this dialogue is that it's just this idea, it's an opportunity site. I think we've defined in the housing element what the opportunity sites are, and I think we should use it as a formal designation as opposed to just lowercase. So it seems like that might make it more clear that this isn't any opportunity site. This opportunity site, if it's in capitals, is only as defined in this document, not just tomorrow I go out and I see an opportunity and it's a new opportunity site. So I think that would help provide some definition and clarity.
So just capitalize it?
Just capitalize it, and then you've defined it earlier, and I'd say throughout, you're using the word opportunity site as a formally.
For the sake of this amendment?
Right.
If we were to capitalize it there and maybe footnote it and explain what it means and put it on this page, would that be okay?
Yeah, I mean, I know there's the structure of definitions and things like that, but I do think it's a formal designation, and that's how you're using it here, so I think it's important to, you could reference back to, I think you could actually just reference back to the figure that's showing it. Either it's defined in the definitions, or it's opportunity sites in the housing element on page H74. You could reference back to that map or something like that.
So why don't I do that? Why don't I, in parentheses, reference back to a map?
Yeah, because I think you've already, you've hit it, you've presented them, and I think that's what you're trying to be clear on, is it's these opportunity sites that we're talking about.
It's page H24, I believe, unless there's a new addition.
I, I'm just referring to the one that I have in this packet. And we're going to have a process question after we answer this one, because I know you were trying to go through everything, and I threw a wrench in it. Sorry. So I'm happy to come back to this, if, let's check the process question.
My process question is, I have comments on prior pages that I held off making, because this was just maybe clarification questions, and so I was assuming we were just going to go through everything with your explanation, if we had slight clarifications, public comment, and then come back to make other comments or change suggestions. I just want to make sure, are we doing it now? We're going to do it later?
I'm happy to withdraw everything I said. Finish the presentation.
It wasn't a criticism, what you just said, I just, light bulb went off, like, oh, wait, maybe we were supposed to be doing that now.
You missed your opportunity? All right, so we'll come back to it. How about that? I'll let you finish and not try to interrupt anyone.
Well, actually, I think I'm pretty much done. Pretty much at this point, I think as staff, what we're interested in is, it's, we're hoping that we could capture most of these changes, but just going through that, we noticed that there are some different errors and clarifications that need to be made. We would appreciate any comments from the planning commission and ads, and so one scenario is you just share with us all your possible corrections or clarifications, then the public would hear that, then maybe they can comment on everything at that time.
Yeah, no, and I think now that we can actually, I would say, suggest that we basically now start from the beginning of what was presented, and I'm happy to go through page by page, make sure that we've addressed anything, concerns, questions that we have, so that everybody can hear it, and then we'll open it up. So we'll work back through what was just reported out. We'll ask our questions, and then we'll open it up for public comment, kind of try to think about the order that we're talking about these different corrections, and then we'll close the public comment, bring it back to the commission for further discussion. So I think that we'll do our best, and I think we need to be clear, concise with our comments and questions, because we do really want to get it out to, open up to the public. All right, so I will go ahead and go back to table H3. That was the first page with the proposed corrections. And I guess what I'd ask is to ask staff either clarification questions or any suggested ideas or changes that we have, and we can kind of go through it that way. So let's focus on table H3 right now. Anybody have comments? Go ahead.
I have a general, a general comment about the tables and an idea both related to the tables and then also related to the pages 69 through 74, which are the illustrations of the opportunity sites. And the question that I have is, is there a disclaimer, for lack of a better word, that might be appropriate to add, and I've seen it on other documents, pieces of this general plan that are for informational purposes or illustration purposes that hold a different level of policy weight than the pages in the document that are goals, objectives, and programs? And something that might say where inconsistencies may exist, this information presides. So I remember at one of the descriptions, there was, the legal counsel said, oh, if there's an inconsistency between the table and the text, the text presides. So this is where the idea of putting that in here, and where that came to mind was there's little teeny maps up in the corner of those opportunity site description pages, and there's also on those description pages, for example, there's also the use of the word opportunity site. I didn't go through all of them to see whether they're capitalized or not. My understanding is that those are kind of illustrative descriptions that don't have the same policy level weight as the pages that have the goals and objectives and programs on them. So I'm just saying, is there some phrase that could be used on those pages and perhaps these tables? Otherwise, I would suggest, for example, in the opportunity site suggestion, which I agree with, that you will then need to, that go back through, there are other places where the word opportunity site is used, there's other places where PDD is used that you would also probably need to put the phrase opportunity site PDD on those pages. I think it's pretty obvious that this is a page talking about an opportunity site, so if the word PDD is used on that page, it's only referring to that opportunity site. But there has been some confusion when it says, you know, PDD shall be blah, blah, blah. It's meaning the PDD associated with this opportunity site, but taken out of context and read as a sentence completely off of that page, it might be construed that you're referring to all PDDs, existing, future, current, non-opportunity sites. So that's a long-winded way of saying, do you want to go back to everywhere where there's a PDD and add the word opportunity site? Do you want to capitalize all the opportunity sites? Or might we add a disclaimer somewhere that says for informational purposes only where conflicts exist, such and such text presides? I'm sorry to be complicated, but.
So let me see if I understand. So on the map, so for example, Lutheran church site, which is the site of some concern, because Jehovah Witness is right next to it, there's the, there's the site photo, there's the highlighting of the area and the pointing of where the two acres can probably be, and then there's a locator map, which in essence took this opportunity site map, shrunk it down, and put a star on it to provide the general location of where this matches up. And is the concern that if someone might take that star to mean more than just the two acres?
My concern is that if there are going, if this is the first of other changes to a map, and you've got shrunken versions of that map in multiple places, we, it raises the potential for them to be inconsistent throughout the document if every time you make a change, they're not, it's not cut and pasted everywhere it needs to be cut and pasted, unless you have some disclaimer that clearly shows. For example, when I went back and looked at the housing element, it looked to me like those little teeny maps had Jehovah's Witness still within one area and not another area. Now granted, they're little teeny, but.
So what I'd like to do is actually make a suggestion. When we started this process, we actually talked about what happens in the town code right now is that there's a listing of every parcel number and what zone it's in, which is a highly problematic way to track, because actually parcel numbers change, things change. So through this process, we were actually saying that the zoning map was going to take precedent. If there are questions, it's the zoning map. Obviously, there are issues with maps as well. I think what I'm hearing from Commissioner Hamilton is that we really have defined through this housing element a master list of opportunity sites, and maybe we do need to have the definition that lists those parcels. So there's no, there's no question about which parcels are the opportunity sites. And then it's not going back to every map and having to fix every single map, because I agree, this master list map is repeated many, many times. It's saying this is the master list of opportunity sites, and just having it defined. But what I'm also hearing is that we need to make sure that somewhere in the document or through this process, we're clear that what takes precedent, what has the, kind of the ultimate standing, because what we've heard is that things in tables suddenly were the most important things ever, even though they were never meant to be, they were presented as examples.
And they were inconsistent with the, I mean, the text clearly said one thing, and the table said something else, and so should that happen again, it would be helpful within the text to document, you know, what takes precedent.
Okay, so let me ask this. Okay, so, let me ask this, just related to the little locator. I think the map itself is just meant to be a location map, not necessarily related any zoning. But just so, if reference was to reference back to this, you could see which star it was supposed to be.
I agree with you, and I understand that, but it might say that for location purposes only or something underneath it.
Sure, we could do that.
We're, we're reacting to recent experience and making sure that what, what is presented is presented in a way that at least makes it clear. It's not saying there won't be mistakes in the future, but at least it identifies what the intent is.
I'll add for location purposes only, on all the maps.
And, and I think what was presented, or what's asked is, when we're starting to talk about these tables, it's the same thing. What, what will take precedent? Is it the definition of that zone? This table is simply presented to help illustrate what the zone is. These tables aren't changing the zoning, they're not changing the purpose of the zone. They're simply illustrating what the zone is in a more understandable process. And, and all of these corrections that are in here are made to help illustrate what those zones are. This, none of what's presented in table H3 actually changes anything about the zoning, but we're here because of the misunderstandings in these tables.
So, I agree 100% with you that normally, typically, it would just be considered errata, not the governing document for what a zoning is or the density is. But you're right, just to be sure, and there's no uncertainty, because members of the community were pointing to that, saying we changed zoning, that the council wanted us to go ahead and include as actual general plan amendment. But are you indicating that perhaps even on the tables, we should say, for illustrative purposes only?
It's either, I don't think you can put it on every table. I think it's part of the document that says, tables presented in the housing element are for illustrative purposes only. They're not intended to change zoning, et cetera. I, I, I think it's a statement, that's an upfront statement that, that's just a.
So, would you like us, is the recommendation adding that statement to every footnote it, and added to every, or added to a sentence somewhere in the document?
I think it's early in the document, and it's just part of the, the recitals at the beginning of the document. It's sort of like definitions, that you define, you define terms early in the document. You basically lay out that it's, that it's clear. The intent, the intent of these tables is to, for, you know, for illustrative purposes. And I think we can, I don't know if I can craft the language right this second, but I do think it's upfront as a.
I got some suggestions.
Alright.
Just a couple of, just, just, let me throw out these ideas and, and see if, if this flies. On the, on the new, on the new version of the general plan, where it starts talking about opportunity sites, which was page H24, I'm not sure what page it is now, we could, we could put a general idea here that PDD is a general zoning designation for a zone specified on the zoning map. And also say designations on the zoning map prevail over text and charts. We could say that. And then we could perhaps put a nice definition of opportunity sites. Now, I don't recall if there's a textual definition of opportunity sites in, in here, in the general plan. But we could say something like, opportunity sites are specific sites that present the opportunity to be zoned PDD.
As, as documented in this, you know, or as itemized.
Something like current, current sites that are, that are identified as, could be zoned PDD. So, something like that is, might be a great idea to put into the document. You know, perhaps at the page that says framework for action, and there are a few points, bullet points there. Then, and it says if the housing element is to be, quote, actionable, responsibilities must be assigned, et cetera. So, maybe in that section, which comes just before the opportunity, trouble is, I'm working from an older version of the book, so. That's my, I, suggestion.
I, I think what we're trying to say, if I'm understanding everybody's concerns, is that being more clear upfront, if you say it once upfront, it does, it, it prevails for the entire document. And we're gonna go through and endeavor to make sure that every, every mistake is corrected as best we can, but we wanna have a definition upfront as well.
So, let me ask this. There's one sentence in the housing element that says, right before the opportunity sites, this is, the following illustrative pages of housing opportunity sites document the key parcels and other sites have identified as potential lower-income housing infill development sites. So, it says illustrative pages, but it sounds like perhaps maybe this spot would be where to add Commissioner Green's comments related to PDD, and maybe some other things on the tables, although the problem is, there's, there's a bunch of tables before then.
My, my, what I'm trying to point out is that it's to any table, not just the PDD or the H3.
So, that would have to come in the beginning of the document?
Yes.
Okay.
I think it's a upfront, this is, the, the intent of the tables are for illustrative, you know, to, to help illustrate. It does, they're not intended to change zoning or, go ahead.
I hear what you're saying, and I appreciate the simplification of having it at the, at the kind of preceding language of these tables. But considering people's use of these tables and how they're taken out of context in certain ways, I think it's really important for every single table to have it on it, so that these cannot be taken out of context. Not everyone starts at the very beginning and reads the whole chapter. The tables are easy to read, and all the text ahead of them is not always where people go first. And so, I think in the name of clarification and understanding of what these tables are for, it needs to say it on each one, and I know it probably makes a lot more work, and I apologize for that. But that's my feeling on it in light of how these tables have been used to this point. And you could just have a footnote after every table that says, this table is for illustrative purposes only. The text, text in the general plan presides.
Prevail, rather than presides, I think.
Okay, prevail. So, this, this table is for illustrative purposes only, general plan text shall provide, shall preside.
So, at least we can come up with a really concise footnote for every table.
Well, we have a source. Can I put it underneath where we say source of the information? Each table has a source. Or I could put it on top, well.
I just think if you put it underneath, like, right underneath source. So, on table H3, it says source, and then between source and Fairfax Planning Area, you just have another note, colon, that this table is for illustrative purposes only, general plan text shall preside. Prevail or preside?
Prevail.
Prevail.
And I, I do think that actually works, because, because it's not, these aren't intended to replace. It's, they're simply trying to present what's in there, so. And that's fine. It looks like the footnotes are in about size eight font, so it won't change the page numbers too much.
So, then does something similar to that need to go at the bottom of the opportunity site illustrative pages?
Yeah, in view of, and I agree, you know, in view of the way people take these things, I think so.
I mean, there are some, there are some sentences on those pages that reference PDD and say, you know, PDD zones shall be blah, blah, blah. And that has been confused to think that it was intended to say that all PDD zones shall be blah, 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 when it was simply meant to be just.
So, I, I think, I, I wanna make sure that we, I think we're skipping ahead of where staff is right this second. Because we're really good at that. I do think that.
Okay.
Alright, go ahead.
Okay, go ahead.
You have a question?
I wanna make sure, so you, you want it on every table in the, in the housing element, or just the ones that are in the, in the staff report? That we've, we're correcting?
You know, I think we're getting to the point where.
You want it in everyone?
It's unfortunate, but I think if it's not in every table, then if there's a mistake in another table that hasn't come up, again, it's.
It might be used to hold things up.
We're, we're trying to be clear that.
You have the wording? Okay, so we'll add that to every table.
And it's essentially that tables don't preside over, they don't change the, change the language.
So, we'll add that, and then we'll add the same language, except we'll refer to as for illustrative, rather than table, we'll say map, and we'll add it to all the opportunity site maps.
And because it's brought up right now, I'm gonna, there is one opportunity site master list that is a map. So, to me, that's not, I always understood that as the, that's what said what the opportunity sites were. So, that's not the, the main map, the one that shows all the site, that's not illustrative. It's the, it's when it's backup. Because where, where we're getting to and what I, you know, something that's been in my head and just trying to be as clear as possible is we're talking about PDD. And all of the plan in this housing element.
Sorry. We're, we're, we're going through this and noticing that there's a lot of tables.
I know.
But it's not necessarily applicable to every table, but it's probably applicable to any table that talks about density. Because that seems to be the major concern. I mean, planning process, I guess that is illustrative, but illustrative, but it's not.
I think, I think the commission would, my take is that my preference would be to put it upfront. It applies to every table. The point that's been made is that it's important to also present it on each table, so that there's no questions, and it's not used in a way that it wasn't intended. I think there's some judgment in there, that if it's presented upfront, that that's the point, and then it's, it's included in the tables that, that may be problematic, then I think, I think that at least addresses the concerns that we're trying to get to.
So, because I, I think we need to be exactly clear on the recommendation. It sounds like we'll include it, that point or that caveat on every, we'll just put it on every table, with the exception in, in the opportunity maps, with the exception of the master opportunity map. And actually, table H1 and H2 are just actual numbers that were generated by A-BAG, so those aren't, I mean, those are kind of accurate, so we won't put it for those.
Those could have mistakes in them too.
So, so maybe, maybe for simplification, you know, what to put on the bottom of these tables and charts is something like this. This table or chart is illustrative only. The zoning map prevails over all such tables and charts. Something like that. Just keep it, you know, simple. And I think maybe a paragraph wouldn't hurt to be added to the beginning of perhaps the housing element section, at least, of the new general plan as amended, that, that says similar to what I mentioned earlier, that the general zoning designations for zones specified on the zoning map prevail. Designations on text and charts over designations on text and charts, just so that people generally understand that.
Okay, so where exactly, I'm sorry, but I just wanna make sure we're all on the same, well, we're on different pages, literally.
Yeah, I, I think, I think what we're trying to say is it needs to be upfront in the recitals or the early section of the housing element. That, that's getting, that's as you're introducing, whether it's definitions, whether it's just background, how this document is used, whatever it might be, I think it's important to state it there.
Right, okay.
And then make sure that whichever tables are in question, that it's also got a footnote on those.
How about, the only reason I'm asking for real strict clarity, I don't want there to be any confusion by the public or staff when we actually take it to the council, that that's not what they said. But how about we add, what I believe Commissioner Green added as text, we just add as a third paragraph under purpose of the housing element.
Yeah, that sounds like a good idea, actually.
Okay, so, back to the exercise we were gonna try to do, which is to get through our, through the tables that were amended. So, we've gotten, we started on H3. We had a general discussion about format and structure and that broad concern. Are there any specifics?
I just have one quick, very clear clarification question. On the public domain, I might just say, public domain, the only residential use allowed is for emergency shelters, just to clarify that that's the residential use. Because there's other uses allowed in that domain, but that's the only residential use. Because there is the heading up there that says typical housing types, and it's meant to just talk about residential, so that's all.
Okay, any other specifics on table H3? Alright. Anything on the narrative that, I believe followed it, which is page H17, the next page, that just the, simply, simply taking out the repetition of at densities? You okay with that? Alright, moving on to table H5, residential development standards. Go ahead.
I just wanted to clarify for the public and also for the commissioners. All of these tables are based on dwelling units per acre. And the UR designations are articulated in the measurements of a dwelling unit per acre. But the RS designations in the code is designated as units per square foot. And so, the amounts and the numbers that are put in here is a, what do you call it when you translate from per square foot to acre? Converted, are converted to acreage, are converted to a per acre number, rather than a per square foot number. And I'm just, by way of clarification, so that people understand, because it's just standardizing it all as dwelling units per acre.
And I'll just point out that when you get your correction, when you see the final, accepting all track changes, there's still some little, an extra dot, things like that on that table, so I'm just looking at that. So, just double, double-check the strikeouts, because then they don't line up when you're looking at, at track changes. Okay. Anything on the note three? It's a two-page table, this H5, so.
I had a question about the relationship between the note three and the text change on H4116. So, on H4116, there's the bullet point that says, reduce the minimum acreage from five acres to one acre for the opportunity sites. That's a very specific reduction from five to one, so that's a specific number. However, note number three is more open-ended than that, and says that may be designated on a property at less than five acre, you know, as less than five acres. So, it's five acres or less, and H116 says from five to one. Is there any, any issues with those, one being very specific, it changes it from five to one, and the other one being anything less than five?
I, I think what we could do is hold that thought. I believe in the actual zoning text, it allows it to be less than five acres at the, if it meets certain criteria, I thought. If the characteristic site allows it, it's at the discretion of the planning commission and the town council. I, I believe that's what the code says, but we'll, we can get back to you on that. Linda's gonna go ahead and look that up now.
Okay. The next table is table H12. Any comments or questions on those corrections? Okay. The next is page H74, which is simply showing the removal of the incorrect interpretation of seven, of UR7 being seventy, seven density units per acre, which was not correct. So, it's been removed, and everything else remains the same in that table. Okay. The next page was page H84, which on objective H11, the correction was to change the units that would be created through this plan from 108 to 124. And I think we did get a clarification of Commissioner Green's questions. Are we okay with that?
Yes.
Okay. And then the last page that had changes to it was page H100, program H4116. We've heard questions on the first bullet, and there's also changes to the second bullet. Go ahead.
So, on, on changes from the 108 to the 124, I didn't go back and look.
So on, on changes from the 108 to the 124, I didn't go back and look, I'm assuming that the staff, there were other objectives with respect to the other designations for housing. Like, this one says for persons with a variety of incomes. There was another objective with the number of sixty, with another number for low income. I'm sorry, I didn't go back to all of those. And I'm, I'm just checking, double checking that all of those numbers were also cross-referenced and looked at to make sure that there wasn't any changes.
The best, best way I can answer it is, I believe so. I believe we went back and cross-checked it. That being said, after tonight's meeting, perhaps we'll go back and double check that.
Just so I don't forget. In the Plan Development District, it reads that a Plan Development District, oh, I just lost it again. No Plan Development District shall include less than five acres of contiguous land unless the Planning Commission and Town Council find that property of less than five acres is suitable as a Plan Development District by virtue of its unique historical character, topography, landscaping features, or other special characteristics as may be determined by the Planning Commission.
So what you're saying is that our current code already allows us to use PDD on a smaller than a five acre.
So I, I think hearing that definition and I think what, the question on the table was really, so, so really going back to that table H5, note three is simply saying what is possible under PDD. That's, that's the way I'm understanding it.
Correct, it was just providing a little more clarification for code.
It's not changing the definition of H, of PDD. It's simply saying that that's what it is or helping provide it. Under program H4116, this is specific to the opportunity sites. And we're really only talking about two of them.
That, that's correct.
And so bullet one is saying reduce the minimum acres of PDD from five acres to one acres for the opportunity sites. But actually, there are only two. And the next bullet is saying specify PDD zoned opportunity sites shall be zoned at 20 units per acre for two acres on Christ Lutheran Church and for Tenali Ma Road. So in, in a way, this is providing specificity, direction from Planning Commission and Town Council that these two sites could be PDD at a smaller acreage.
Right. And now that you bring it up, what we can do is, when we say reduce minimum acreage from PDD site from five acres to one acre, we could actually list the opportunity sites that that actually impacts. And then that, that takes away any reference to maps because it lists the property that's impacted.
I, I mean, we could, the program name is amend the Plan Development District Zone Standards. Actually, we're not amending the zone standards. We're simply defining that there are two opportunity sites that are in that.
Well, under, under H4116, should we not then say under the first bullet point, reduce the minimum acreage for a PDD from five acres to one acre for the following opportunity sites?
Yes. I, I guess what I'm saying is the title of that program is actually.
And a capital O and a capital S.
Overly broad. We could, we could narrow the title of that program and then we'd just keep it straightforward.
Cause if it only applies to those two sites, then we should clarify that.
So for the program, which is amending the code, well, amending a code just to restrict it to those two sites, but you think we should, you would like to modify what the title of that program is?
Can I make a suggestion? Just to add amend the Plan Development District Zone Standards for Opportunity Sites. Cause that's, you're not intending to amend all Plan Development District standards. You're only, the, the intention of everything underneath it is simply to amend, or you could say amend the opportunity site planned district development zone standards.
That's correct. And actually, it's, I guess it's actually three sites for five acres to one, cause that includes School Street Plaza as of now.
Which was my other question, cause School Street, if you're gonna list them, you either have to have them all or not be specific. But School Street's omitted from the edited text in there, so. No, there's no edits in here, text right here on the second bullet pipe. So I think if we just said amend the opportunity site Plan Development District Zone Standards, that clarifies that this program is simply related to opportunity sites. And then my preference would be not to list them specifically because there may be other, if, if, if in our forum or something like that, School Street, something changes and it's no longer called an opportunity site. If you add an opportunity site or you delete an opportunity site, then you have to be really diligent to go back through your entire text and make sure that wherever you've listed them, you redact them or add them. And if you just use the word opportunity site, you don't have to worry about inconsistencies.
I like that. And then the second bullet under here is, is specific to the two properties because they're specific. With the Christ Lutheran, it's two acres. It's, it's gotta call, it's calling that out, that it's not the entire parcel.
But I would get rid of the Tenali Ma Road.
But we don't need Tenali Ma, cause it's not.
Because you're not talking about School Street also, so you could just say specify that the PDD zoned opportunity sites, capital O, shall be reserved for residential development only at a max, minimum of 20 units per acre, period. Christ Lutheran Church opportunity site shall further be limited to a maximum of, or application of this unit per acre density on Christ Lutheran Church shall be limited to a maximum of two acres, or something like that.
Well, I think for this one, the housing element's pretty clear about minimum of 20 units per acre for those two sites only. So.
Not School Street?
No, School Street wasn't in, wasn't envisioned when we actually did a capacity study. We only counted nine units. So we, it, housing element isn't recommending a minimum density for School Street Plaza.
I know it was envisioned, but I'm making sure.
But here's a clarification, PDD doesn't set a density.
That's correct.
This is what sets the density. So this is setting the density for those two.
This is what's recommending that we set a minimum density for two sites only. But School Street Plaza was intentionally not intended to have a minimum density.
It was PDD, but it didn't have a density of twenty.
That, that's correct. PDD was just to allow flexibility for residential.
So the second bullet isn't about whether it's PDD or not, it's about 20 units per acre density for those two sites only.
Well, just, just, let me ask, this is, this is a new 4116 of the new amended general plan, right? So should that specify these properties at all? Or is this sort of fixed in stone that there's a maximum of two acres for the Christ Lutheran Church? It's already been decided.
Yes, the housing element's very specific when it comes to the Christ Lutheran Church property in Tenali Ma. It's, it's very specific on how it's analyzing it, including the affordable units. So it's quite clear, it's the 20 unit minimum density is only applies to the two acres of the church property in Tenali Ma and it's not meant to apply to any other properties.
Okay, okay, thanks.
But I, I think it's an important distinction. PDD is not 20 units per acre. PDD is as determined through the process. This housing element, these amendments are identifying only those two parcels. And the limitation of only two acres on the Christ Lutheran Church, Church parcel to have that, that density.
I, I think we're all in agreement on what it means. I think we need to make sure that the sentences say what we all know that it means, because when we read them, we didn't know that.
And I, I think your, your proposed revisions made good sense. I think we, we do need to keep the Tenali Ma in there.
Yes, yes. I agree with that. I'm just saying that it's not clear from the way that it's written, what, what we've now heard. So maybe something like specify that the PD, specify that the Ten Olima and Christ Lutheran, Christ Lutheran Church PDD zoned opportunity sites shall be reserved for residential development only at a minimum of 20 units per acre, period. Furthermore, the Christ Lutheran Church site shall, or the Christ Lutheran Church site shall also be limited to a maximum of two acres, period. So you're separating those two concepts. You've got two concepts going on here. One is that it's Christ Lutheran Church and Olima that are 20 units per acre only. And the other concept is that Christ Lutheran Church, that, that the 20 units per acre will only apply to two acres at Christ Lutheran Church. So if you have those in two separate sentences, it's a lot more clear.
How about, how about one tweak to what you did? If it makes it, I don't know if it makes it simpler, but what if we take what you said and just say specify that, which, okay. Basically, you said specify that a maximum of two acres on the Christ Lutheran Church opportunity site and Ten Olima Road opportunity site shall be reserved for residential development only at a minimum of 20 units per acre.
I, I think that makes it clear. I, I think that's okay.
So you're saying that the two acres on Christ Lutheran Church and the Tenali Ma, yes, that would be more clear. If you put those two up front, then I think that clarifies that those are the only two pieces of land that shall have the 20 units per acre applied to them.
Right, and then maybe it should be another bullet point that the Christ Lutheran Church site is limited to a maximum of two acres.
I think that's what that did. It said that the, the, the site is gonna be bigger than two acres, but only the two acres are going to be eligible for the 20 units per acre. So the site remains the larger site. It's just those two acres that get, that have the 20 units per acre.
Clear as, clear as daylight? You got it?
I, I think we got it.
Okay. The last item, and I think we should, cause I do wanna get to the public comments, but I wanna make sure we, you mentioned the map, you mentioned the colors on the map. Just, let's make sure that when we say the map prevails and then we make maps that actually have problems, that we don't do that. So, one thing, and I think because you said it, the color on the Jehovah's Witness site is incorrect, so this map will be revised. You know, I, I think we need to do our best to make sure that when these go out, they're, they're ready to go.
Yes, so that color right there, sorry.
There's an orangish color that should apply.
Is supposed to be right here.
Yes. And that map's gonna go away really soon too, right? Because that one has it, the Christ Lutheran is PDD, so. Or the Jehovah's Witness site is PDD. Go ahead.
I would also suggest, in your staff report, you, in your staff report, but not in any of the amendments, you discuss the Jehovah's Witnesses going back to the existing zoning designation of UR7. On the map, excuse me, on the opportunity site map, and perhaps also on the actual zoning map that's gonna be in the land use element, that little pie piece right there confusingly appears as though it's an RS6 area. And I think if you just stick a, stuck a little UR7 in that wedge, it'll be really clear. Cause it kinda looks like, and I would do that both here on the opportunity site map. And then I think you're gonna need to do it in the land use element on the master zoning map as well. Which I don't see in here, which, do we need to have it in here? No, there's another one with all the letters on it.
No, she's, no, no, she's talking about if you go to the master, the opportunity site master list map, that one. And, and then asking, my understanding is this map that we're looking at, LU1, replaced any other map that had been referenced that had all the labels on them? I thought this was the map that we were now using, yeah.
Is this the one and only zoning map? This is it? This is the big kahuna in the general plan?
That's correct.
Okay. So I guess then it doesn't need it, cause there aren't any other letters on here. It's just by color.
There's no other zoning designation on it.
It does need the right color, though. The, the other question I have, and because we've had such a long discussion about opportunity sites, I'm gonna ask, why wouldn't our zoning map show the two opportunity sites or the six, I mean?
I'm sorry, I missed that.
Maybe I'm, as I'm asking it, the opportunity sites included the CH to CC, all those other changes as well. So I'll take it back. We're only talking about the PDD ones, so. Got it. What I was trying to figure out is how can we represent two acres, not 100 acres, which is the way it kind of appears here when you look at the Christ Lutheran. Even, even though we're saying it only applies to two acres, it's still on the map showing and it appears like that whole area is fully PDD and it could be all developed.
What we can do is on this map, it does show a little, it actually illustrates where the two acres could possibly be. It's just hard to see. So I think if we beef that up somehow, that would, that would show up.
I think that might help a little bit. Okay. All right. Are we okay with all of our questions? Cause I wanna get to public comments. All right. So at this stage, for those of you that listened in or sat through this, I'll invite you, give your name and address, three minutes. And if you can point to any of the specific table, if you have comments on tables or page numbers, please call those out so we're able to, to know which, what exactly you're talking about. And if it's just a general comment or general statement, that's okay too. So come on up, name, address and.
Let me just make one comment, and that is the name and address is optional. If you don't wanna give your name and address, it's okay.
Okay, that's the first call. We'll go for a second call. Is there anybody who wants to come up and make any comments?
I will. Yvette Wakefield, 23 Alhambra Circle, Fairfax. I'm trying to learn about this. I've become very interested since I found out about the high-density housing trying to be pushed through in all our cities and towns here in Marin, not just here, but all over. And I learned, I'm also studying, taking a real estate course. And so I'm learning about this through the course also. And I read that in the general plan that the state wants the towns and cities to have. They are supposed to address certain things, including housing. And noise. And the environment. Where I live now on Alhambra Circle, I'm right on Sir Francis Drake Boulevard, right across the street from Christ Lutheran Church. And I can tell you, it's like living on a highway to live on Sir Francis Drake Boulevard. And you should not put any housing there for people because it would be very unhealthy because of the pollution and because of the noise. There are many, many studies that show anyone living or working or going to school where there is a lot of traffic is likely, much more likely to get asthma and other respiratory infections. Children are six to eight times more likely to get leukemia if they live within 350 yards of a busy street. So this whole idea is wrong. The world has really changed a lot and housing should be someplace that is safe and healthy. And I would like to ask you to please look at this again, to take that into consideration and to find some areas where it is healthy for people to live. And where it is going to be sustainable. And where it is not gonna be the case where these big developers are in here to make a lot of money. And where our town staff makes things up to tell to the public about how wonderful this is going to be when it's not really. And I keep hearing different information. And I don't like that at all. So I really urge you to take another look at this whole matter. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Bruce Zacharman, 17 Valley Road. So I support the changes that you've gone through. I think it's, as one of the people among, among all of us who look through this, it's unfortunate that we missed some of these details and got some inconsistencies in there, so I'm glad that we're getting them fixed. And just as far as the, the comment about the opportunity sites being close to Sir Francis Drake and close to the town center, I think that is what supports sustainability. And it is what limits the traffic, which is what the ultimate concern was. That, that allows people to not have to have a car in order to get into town and do things or to get to transit or to get to any other town. to get to transit, or to get to any other town. So that, that is the point. And this really is kind of on the long-term horizon, but I think eventually we will be using less cars, because we'll have to use less cars. Or if we don't use less cars, there'll be electric cars. But one way or the other, we can't be driving in these gasoline-powered cars in the kind of quantity we are forever. So, I think actually that's a problem that will slowly mitigate. We're probably pretty much at the peak of gasoline-powered traffic roaring down Sir Francis Drake right now, thank goodness, and I think that will, that'll be a problem that can be solved. But the only way that it will be solved is for us to think about where we live and how we locate ourselves relative to where we work, where we shop, where we go meet other people. So, thank you for the work.
Thank you. Anybody else have comments?
Maybe you can.
Here, turn, push the button to turn it on. There you go.
Very high-tech. I really just have one question for clarification. I realize I'm being a little bit dense here, but could somebody please explain to me specifically what is meant by opportunity site?
Let me just ask, do you have any other comments, or that's your question and you want an explanation?
Yes, please.
Can we have our town manager describe it?
Sure. Housing, opportunity sites are actually total of six sites that are identified within the housing element for certain housing-type projects. One is, we refer to as the Christ Lutheran Church property. That's a 40-unit senior affordable housing project. Ten Aluma is like a one-acre project of maybe 22 units of workforce housing. There's something referred to as School Street Plaza downtown's potential housing location. And then, in essence, the Fair and Selm over in that area, I think that's two or, two, two properties, I think. So it's a total of six properties we're referring to as opportunities for future, planning for future housing. But the document is just planning for future housing? It doesn't mean it has to be built, but it's creating a possibility so it can be built.
So it is, refers to specifically areas for future housing units?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, great, thank you.
Okay, is there anybody else has comments, questions? All right. Seeing none, I'm not seeing anybody from the public. I'm going to close the public comment session, bring it back to the commission.
I was just, I was just going to further add, you know, specifically out of our housing element, the language around these opportunity sites are, "to create conditions that will foster the development of..." dot, dot, dot. And so it's, the opportunity sites are sites that we have found appropriate for creating conditions to foster, and that we want to specifically prepare for the possibility of housing of a particular type, and we want to be thoughtful and proactive about the future of our town. And so that's the idea of looking at these sites and being thoughtful about what this site might look like in the future, and so that we have parameters around those sites to help us look to the future of what those sites might be, rather than having, not having it described in a future condition, and leaving it open to a developer who would come in and say, "Well, this is the way I want it to be." If we proactively put out there what, what we as a town think that site ought to look like, that helps us when we do have a developer or a landowner come in and want to do something with the site. Well, then we look to our plan and see, does it fit with what our town has said we think that site ought to be used for? So it is a proactive planning tool for how we want to see the town look in the future.
And, and when the housing element was adopted last fall, there was also a environmental document, CEQA compliance, as well as a traffic study that were conducted as part of the housing element and the compliance for the housing element. So, those, those are all things that have been considered at these scales. We're not talking about larger scale, but it's at these scales, those, those environmental considerations were certainly looked at. Okay, so what I want to make sure is that now we've gone through, we've talked through all these ideas, and, and it sounds like we need to come up with our recommendations for, for the town. And I'd like to ask staff, the question I have is that there is a resolution that's included in here for our consideration, given the breadth of discussion that we've had today. Is that all these things we've talked about as amended? Is it realistic to have a resolution that would, that we could look at today and incorporate all of this, or are we too far along to-
Yes, I believe so, because really it's, the, the resolution itself refers to the attachments, and so I think, as long as you, it sounds like you'd be directing us to approve the attachments as amended, even that creates some additional attachments, and that'd be enough for us to, to move forward and make those changes and bring that recommendation forward to the town council.
Okay. Good to know. Go ahead.
I have a list of what I think I heard us say, that I can just repeat so that when we make a motion, and as amended, we know what that list is and make sure we haven't missed anything with staff and us. Does that work?
Well, we could, we could do that. I just want to say that my, my reading of this resolution is that it is a very general resolution, adopting in a very overall way, the proposed changes to the general, the amendments to the general plan. So, I would be cautious about adding specific amendments that we've proposed tonight to that resolution, rather than putting them in the attachments that are referred to in the resolution.
That's what I was meaning, was putting them, because there are attachments to the resolution, so it was, that's what I was referring to, in the attachments.
Great. I think we might want to add the words, though, "as amended" somewhere in this resolution.
Yeah, that's what I was asking as well, that, it's, the resolution is broad, but if we're making changes, we can pass a resolution that incorporates the changes we're recommending. Okay, so, maybe it's most productive to hear, hear the lists that we've all kind of discussed and make sure that we have clarity on that list. So, Commissioner Hamilton, if you want to run us through that, and then we can, we should all be taking notes and making sure that we get it clear.
So Lynn, I'm looking at you to make sure that this list matches with what you have as well. And I won't recite verbatim everything, I'm just going to, if you say, "Got it from what he said," or whatever, then we'll do that. So, the first one is that there will be a paragraph added to the purpose section of the housing element, as per the language recited earlier, related to designated zoning maps shall prevail over text and charts and whatever he said.
This is only, I got it.
Exactly. Then there will be a footnote on every table that says something like, "This table is for illustrative purposes, zoning map prevails, blah, blah, blah." That's two. That the, hold on a second here, let me check these off, that the public domain text was amended to be only residential uses, that kind of thing. That the staff will review the other housing element objectives that contain unit numbers, HCD unit numbers, to make sure that when you change the 108 to one, that there's no other changes. That's not really an amendment, but it's a direction or staff recommendation. That the, hold on a second. The title for program H4116 is amended to read, amend the, add the word "opportunity site" before the words "planned development district." That the language on the second bullet point was amended to say, specify a maximum of two acres on the Christ Lutheran Church and the Aluma Road, PDD opportunity zone site shall be reserved for blah, blah, blah. And that the color will be changed on the map to reflect the UR7 designation of the site, the Jehovah's Witness, thank you. And there was a suggestion that the document be reviewed to capitalize the word "opportunity site" throughout.
Entire housing element, or just in that one section?
I, I guess the recommendation was that we define opportunity site and use it formally as appropriate in the housing element.
Do a find and replace. Everywhere you find "opportunity site lowercase," it becomes "opportunity site uppercase."
I, I'm comfortable saying it's, formalize it as a, a specific term, and then review and replace "as appropriate" in case there are times where you have opportunity site where it was not meant from that context.
So-
And it can be limited to the housing element, I think that-
Okay. Opportunity sites capitalized, and a statement somewhere that defines what opportunity site means.
Right. And really it's referencing what we described, what's in the opportunity site master list map. That, if, if there's a, if there's the term "opportunity site," and it's not referring to these, the parcels identified, then I, it's doesn't, it's not a formal use of it. But where we're using it formally, we've defined it and we use it in that way. Yeah.
That's all I have. Did I miss anything?
I think the only one that I was not sure about is the first bullet under program H4116, because I think it is for, this reduced minimum acres for PDD from five acres to one acre is, it is for just the two opportunity sites that were, or for the following opportunity sites, and we listed, that, that's the one that I, maybe we didn't resolve, but-
Oh, okay.
We needed to be clear, it really is limited to just the two we're talking about.
I think, I thought the discussion was-
We're not redefining PDD.
Right.
We're only talking about the opportunity sites.
Right, although at this point-
Shelley came up with a new sentence for the second bullet point, and I think that, that worked.
So then we can get rid of the first bullet?
If you have that.
Yeah, we had the second bullet point, but I'm talking about the first bullet point.
Well, the first bullet point, I think you're right. We should say, we could say the following two opportunity sites to be really specific.
I think the problem, the only problem with that is there's technically three opportunity sites, although School Street Plaza could be removed as council moves forward and has its workshops. So I thought the discussion was not to be specific for the first one, but just capitalize opportunity sites with the caveat that what happens is if it changes, then, well, then-
Okay. What I want to make sure of is we're not changing the, that PDD could be one acre anywhere. And so if it's, yeah, if it's capital opportunity sites, I, I think that does it, so. So that's a perfect use of the formal term "opportunity site."
That works for me.
Okay.
Okay.
Thanks.
Got it.
All right, any other specific comments? I think that reflects most of what we discussed. Then are we ready to make a motion? Process-wise, I think, are there any comments on the resolution, so we make sure that we have the language in the resolution if we're going to propose to-
The only, yeah, I had, I had other comments, but we've clarified a lot of that. My only addition of language to the resolution would be right before section one, where it says, "Now, therefore, be it resolved as follows." The paragraph above that, where it says, "We made findings, formulated recommendations," and I, and I think we should add "and amendments thereto" to the town council.
So I want to make sure you guys are seeing that. It's the last, it's the last sentence on page, well, it's the, the last page of the resolution, it's the last sentence before the "now therefore be it resolved," that it would say, "And formulated a recommendation and amendments to the town council?" Is that?
Right.
Is that the right spot for it?
That's fine. Yeah, that's where I would put it. And, you know, and that's-
Formulated a recommendation with amendments? Would that work?
Sure, that's fine too. And, and just to point out to the public, all this does go to the town council. We still have some democratic process here, so this isn't the end-all, do-all, this is just our, our sending it on to the town council.
So perhaps then in section two, if you like, after it says, "Planning Commission further finds a general plan amendment as amended, comma, attached hereto, will not adversely af-" I don't know. Maybe what you did sufficient.
The amendment as amended?
What if we said-
It gets a little confusing, doesn't it?
General plan amendment with attached, general plan amendment as attached and amended?
No, I, I think we'd be better off just leaving it up, up, up higher, the recommendation and amendments to the town council.
All right.
Because that encompasses all the following, "Now therefore, let it be resolved as follows."
The whereas does?
I actually think that since the attachments currently don't reflect the amendments that we just talked about, that, that we might want to say something like, that the general plan amendment attached hereto as amended, attached hereto and as amended-
And as amended. Period.
Period.
Keep going.
No, it has to say, "will not adversely affect the public health, etc."
No, no.
Yeah, 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 right.
I was trying to stop her from adding more words. I was just trying to get a three-word addition to a sentence, rather than a two new sentences. All right. So what we're proposing then is, the, that, in the last whereas, it finishes by saying, "And formulated a recommendation with amendments to the town council." And then, section two would read, "The Planning Commission further finds that the general plan amendments attached hereto and as amended will not here, will not adversely affect the public health, safety, or welfare in so much as it will provide for the orderly and consistent development of the town." Is staff okay with that?
Yep.
Okay.
I think we, we got it, and then-
Process question, do we, do we proceed with moving the attached amendments, adopting, accepting those, and then doing the resolution as a separate motion, or do we do all of it together?
If you just adopt the resolution, it, it's adopting everything as amended.
With all those amendments. Okay. All right. So, I would be willing to take a motion, or entertain a motion to adopt the resolution with the attachments as amended? And somebody can explain that further if they want to, but-
I would like to make a motion to approve resolution number 14-dash, fill in the blank, as amended with the attachments as amended.
And are you, you don't need any more clarification than that, we'll be able to work with it.
I'll second that motion.
All right. So we have a motion and a second, we'll do a roll call vote.
Aye.
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 Commissioner Lamont.
Aye.
So it passes unanimously. So I guess the next step is back to you guys, the council, this isn't one of those that-
Right, we'll, we'll take it, see, we have to do a notice tomorrow, so we'll take it to town council, the first meeting in September.
Okay. So, so for the public, that would be September 3rd?
September 3rd. It'll be noticed as a public hearing.
Okay.
So, and thank you to the planning commission for all your comments, that's very helpful.
Thank you. All right. So, there are some folks that were not here for this item. It's 8:30, and I think we're good to keep moving, right? Okay. So we're going to keep on proceeding. The next item on tonight's agenda is, I'm going to give you the, that back, is 48 Gary Avenue, application 14-31.
Okay, the proposed project encompasses extensive remodeling and expansion of the existing 1,331 square foot, currently a two-story, two-bedroom, two-bath, single-family residence into a 1,768 square foot, three-story, two-bedroom, two-and-a-half-bath, single-family residence. The new residence is going to provide the required parking. The current house is really lacking in parking, and only has one space that's accessed off a private easement off of Taylor, right? Yeah, so it's going to provide parking up above on, what did I say here? Clarify for me? Roca, yeah, okay, thanks. Anyway, the project, because the lot is so small, the project does require a number of discretionary permits, and I'm just going to list them here. It requires a hill area residential development permit, and the purpose of that permit is to make sure that when new homes or extensive remodels are done on houses in, in our hillside areas where we have unstable soils, that the project can be built safely without impacting residents of the site or neighboring residents. The town in- to make sure that when new homes or extensive remodels are done on houses in, in our hillside areas where we have unstable soils, that the project can be built safely without impacting residents of the site or neighboring residents. The town engineer has reviewed a number of plans, reports, surveys, soils reports by JL Engineering, a survey by JL Engineering and, and engineering reports by, um, earth science consultants. And after reviewing a myriad of reports and plans, um, he has determined that the site can be built on without negatively impacting future residents of the property, neighboring properties and homeowners and/or the adjacent public improvements such as the roadways. The project also requires an encroachment permit because they are going to be building parking up above and our roadways are not paved to the full width of our right-of-way easements. And so when you want to connect your parking from your property up to the edge of the road, you invariably have to build something, in this case retaining walls and portions of the driveway in the public right-of-way. And these encroachment permits are revocable, so if the town ever has to come in to fix a roadside, um, it's a document that gets recorded that can be revoked so that they won't sue us if we have to take down the access to their parking. Because the site is so small, it also requires a number of variances. The lot's very narrow and you really couldn't, you couldn't rebuild the existing house without requiring variances. The applicant has designed it so that the living space is pulled further away from the side property line, so the living space right now goes right up to the side property line. It's gonna come close to meeting the required twenty-foot combined setback with the living space. He does include decks that go right up to the property lines and the staff did have an issue with that because when you're doing this much work on a house, you really should try to comply as much as possible with, with regulations. In this case, the building code and the fire code would require a solid wall from the top of the deck railings down to the ground in order to meet fire codes. And they didn't show that in their elevations and so we included a condition, should you choose to approve it, that the decks have to maintain a minimum of three feet setbacks from both of the side property lines. The stairs that go from the parking deck to the house also are in the setback and that's because they're trying to avoid taking out the few oak trees on the site. They are getting close though, so we've added a condition that they provide a certified arborist report making recommendations for mitigation measures to be implemented during and after the construction to make sure that the oak trees are maintained and healthy. Because it's a fifty percent remodel, the project also requires design review approval from the commission. And the architecture being proposed incorporates a modern clean design with the, within the footprint of the existing cabin and it steps the hill, the house down the hillside from Roca to minimize the expanded three-story structure's impact on the neighboring properties, in staff's opinion. They meet the parking requirements, they're not proposing to remove any trees. The excavation amount is gonna be less than the hundred cubic yards that requires your review and approval. And therefore we're recommending that you approve the project subject, based on the findings and subject to the conditions contained in the staff report, including that the decks maintain the minimum three-foot setback and that they provide an arborist report for the trees that they will be building near. And, um, you received something from a neighbor today. Staff, you know, it came after three, so we were not able to review it. There are three copies that have photographs and you're gonna have to share those, but you each have a copy of the written, I believe. So that would conclude our report.
So I just want to make sure because you did introduce the, we have a booklet that we received.
Right.
And I just want to make sure in your experience, given the timing, obviously it's everybody's opportunity to provide information, things like that.
Yeah, my understanding is the applicant intends to, to speak and is gonna
Right.
Give you, you know, address this booklet and it's mostly for your reference with photographs and things, so he, he understands that you just got it and, you know, your time to review it is limited.
Okay, so I just want to make that clear and we'll, we'll share them as we can. Okay, so for the commission, do we have any questions for staff at this point?
The railings that you talked about are just the parking deck or they have to be solid on the house as well for the stairways and things?
I'm sorry, I'm talking about the railings on the house because the decks are going right up, they're proposing portions of the decks that are gonna be within three feet from the property lines. I believe the parking deck is far enough away that it doesn't have to be solid railings. It's the house itself.
So it's the, the stairways around the house have to have solid railings, not the, the decks proposed off either side?
I have a question on, um, let's see, I guess it's page three of the, of the staff report. And that says the property is shown on the open space element of the general map as having a slope of more than thirty-one percent, et cetera. Is there any open space concern here at all?
No, no. Our open space map, it identifies a number of criteria like wildfire hazards and slope and they were intending that you would use it to try to determine areas that might be purchased for open space, but I, they weren't intending it to apply to developed subdivisions.
So there's no open space being used up in this project?
No.
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions at this time?
The three-story is this upslope, downslope kind of situation? Could you just describe that?
Yeah. What the code does is it, it limits, it limits, um, houses on the upslope to two, to three stories and twenty-eight point five feet in height. And on the downslope, you're limited to three stories, but you can go up to thirty-five feet in height. So when the house was accessed from down below, um, it was limited to twenty-eight point five feet in height, but now they're accessing it from up above and providing parking. So their, their height limit increases and they're well below it.
Yeah, what they're proposing is twenty-two and a half feet.
Right. So they're even below the height limit if they were going, accessing it from below. It's always tough, this site's especially hard because it's not just bordered on three sides, it's, it's kind of wedged in between four parcels and so it's, it's really right in the middle of a lot of different homes and it's, um, hard to be completely unobtrusive.
Okay. Any other questions? So at this time, I'd like to open it up to the applicant to come present the project. I know there haven't been a lot of questions asked yet, but that doesn't mean there won't be. And if, if you have seen some of the concerns, it always, it's not a bad thing to try to address those, cause we'll have those questions too.
Hi, I'm Megan Kelly Sweeney. I'm representing Jeff Mahaney, who's the architect for the project. And, and I've been working extensively on it as well. And I appreciate Linda's staff report. I think she covered most of the issues. I haven't actually seen the booklet myself, but I think I've got a sense of what might be in it. And I think the, the key points that we want to emphasize are that we are working within the existing footprint of a very small existing house that, that currently as, as it exists now has substandard ceiling heights, um, under seven feet in some places. It's, you know, severely deteriorated and, and desperately in need of repair. So this renovation will really be, um, a benefit to the entire neighborhood around it, I think, because it, it has been kind of a derelict property. And working within that existing footprint, which is quite small, we've reduced some of the odd appendages around it to create a, a simple rectangular footprint. And to create a, you know, a reasonable two-bedroom space with two bedrooms on one level and a reasonable living kitchen dining space on another level, we've stepped it up the, the hillside, but it, it is necessary to go up a little higher than it currently is. And relative to the existing grade, we, the second, the highest level where the bedrooms are is actually not very high above the existing grade even at that point. So it is really, um, working with the topography as much as possible. It's also worth noting that the original plan, um, this current proposal that you're looking at reflects a reduction in the height of the overall building and that uppermost level. Originally, we had planned to do a rooftop garden because on a hillside site, it is difficult to find usable outdoor space that's level. So that was one strategy for that and we did, um, share that with many of the neighbors and got a lot of support for it, but we did have some concerns about views being blocked, so we made an effort to reduce that height and remove the rooftop garden to, to reduce the potential impact on privacy as well. So we've already tried to address that in the current proposed plan as well. And I'm happy to answer any questions you might have or anyone else might have.
So I'm gonna take an interlude right now and just say, Linda, I know that where there was a time when somebody requested that we must have full-size plans. But I think it creates situations like this where we're all trying to do this. So I know there's no really simple compromise, but sometimes it's, um, I'm very comfortable with your discretion, but, but I, it's just.
So you want to go back to, you want to go back to ledger size?
I don't want to bring it up right now.
But do you want the ledger size to be scaled?
Yes. I just want to make sure that.
Half-size.
We don't look like this all the time.
Can I make a suggestion? You know, we, can we, can we put that on the agenda for discussion at the next meeting? Okay.
All right, now to our question. Go ahead.
Is, are there, is there, are there two entrances? One on the first floor and then one on the second floor?
Yeah, the main entrance, you'll come down the stairs from Roca and enter via that deck that's off of the west side of the building there. There is a back door around the back, um, which leads to stairs that take you down to the lowest level that you could also come through the easement to access that lower level. So it has a little door and a porch that looks out towards that easement as well.
And that lower level is the one that has the office, the utility room and a bathroom?
Right, yeah, the laundry is down there. And that level is largely staying as existing, there's, that's just renovating an existing bathroom and an existing laundry area.
Doesn't sound like we have any other questions yet, but we'll reserve the right to ask you more questions if others come up.
Happy to.
Thanks. Go ahead, one more.
I have a design question, sorry, one other design question. Could you talk a little bit about the, um, the selection of the design in terms of the roof lines and the colors and how that, given, given kind of its tight proximity to, um, the other buildings and forested kind of area and that kind of thing?
Sure, yeah, we were largely going for something that was simple and clean and, and most efficient as well in terms of being able to use the square footage well without, um, having, you know, high peaked roofs or anything like that on a hillside site like this. So the stepping back creates separate volumes, which helps kind of break up the mass of the building as well. And the, a lot of the color selections are really about, it's a very shaded wooded area and, um, the colors that we're looking at is kind of a straw color that picks up some of the natural oak woodland tones and will reflect light as well so that it, it works with the natural environment, but also will bounce light potentially into some of the neighbors' houses as well, um, not, you know, not glaring so, but in terms of just emphasizing the, the filtered light that comes through the trees in the area and trying to blend in with the surroundings.
I have one question. Is the house being lived in at the moment?
Not currently.
Is it, is it too derelict to be lived in?
Yes, it's, it's in severe disrepair.
Okay, thank you.
All right, any other questions? Okay, let's open it up to the public. So anybody here that's got comments, concerns? Let us know.
Randy Engel, one twenty-two Taylor, this is my wife Sarah. You should have in front of you a, the three of you should have a bound document that I apologize, I only got to you today. There are also two other documents have the same information in them, except the bound documents show a listing with photos of all of the houses in the neighborhood. The smaller documents do not. Those bound documents have a, uh, a, a copy of my original statement that I was gonna make, but it was too long, so I've shortened it. It also has some photos of this property from various points of view. And then, as I said, it's got a, a listing of all the houses in the neighborhood and a, a map of those houses showing their proximity. We are, we are homeowners. We've lived at one twenty-two Taylor, which is immediately north of forty-eight Geary. Lived there since nineteen ninety-five and we also own a small software company and we have our office in Fairfax and have always had it here. Also, we have some neighbors here with us, Brett and Jamie Disordo, who live at one eighteen Taylor, which is also immediately north of this property. And Brett's gonna speak after me. We have some grave concerns regarding this proposed construction. We appreciate that the forty-eight Geary parcel presents a huge challenge for building a house with parking. It is long and skinny and on a slope, which is probably why this house has been vacant for so long and it has been sold five times in the last twelve years. We understand that legally, one can build a three-story structure at the bottom of a downhill slope. However, I don't know, but I would conjecture that the spirit of this ordinance was written for the situation where the adjacent parcels have the same sloping condition. This is not the case regarding this parcel and the immediately adjacent parcels. Forty-eight Geary is the only parcel where the built, building site is on the bottom of the downhill slope. All of the other immediately adjacent houses are built on the flat or else they are at the top of an uphill slope. If this is built as proposed, this structure would become the dominant landmark of the immediate neighborhood and dramatically change the character of the neighborhood. The proposed construction would raise the elevation of the existing structure approximately twelve feet above its current height and it is within a very few feet of the property line. Though we are not happy about it, we understand that the new Roca Drive access is really the only place that a parking deck could be built and as such, we would have little objection to it. I would like to direct your attention to the accompanying photos in the document that I have. Notice that in most of the photos, you can barely distinguish that there is a two-story house at this location due to the heavily wooded setting. One sheet of the plans submit, submitted by Mr. Haleka shows an existing elevation viewed from the north, where the existing structure fence appears to be on a considerable slope, approximately thirty degrees. As well, it shows the existing structure to rise several feet above the fence. In the plans, by the way, this is existing structure called east elevation. I would like to direct your attention to the accompanying photo labeled photo A, which viewed from the north, where the existing structure and fence, I'm sorry, which, which clearly shows that the slope is quite gentle and the existing structure is only a few feet above the fence. This is shown in the plans as east elevation, which is inaccurate, it is a north elevation. And this makes us wonder what else in these plans are inaccurate. I would now like to draw your attention to the next photo in the list, photo B. This shows the proposed structure, what the proposed structure would look like from the point of view of one eighteen Taylor, which is immediately north. In the attached listing of houses in the neighborhood, note that the average square footage of, for the entire neighborhood is under thirteen hundred square feet. Did I miss a page here? Oh, I'm sorry. In regards to the photo B versus photo A, I think you'll notice this is a very dramatic difference in what will be viewed from the surrounding neighborhood. In summation, we strongly feel that allowing the building of the proposed structure would severely change the character of the immediate neighborhood. The proposed structure would become the The proposed structure would become the dominant draw of attention and is not in keeping nor complementary with the rest of the neighborhood. We are not opposed to Mr. Halekis rebuilding a house at this location. We simply propose that the rebuilt structure be limited to two stories with eight-foot ceilings. We realize this structure would be smaller than is desired by Mr. Halekis but could easily be the same square footage as the original and easily as large as the majority of other houses in the neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else from the public? Do you guys have a copy of this now? Okay. We should just make sure they have a copy so they could at least, if we ask questions, they can address it. Sorry, thanks. So anybody else from the public, so let me get comments from the public and I'm sure we'll have some questions.
Hello, my name is Brett DeZordo, I lived directly behind this proposed development, 118 Taylor Drive. And the two... Let's see, so say, referring to Photo A in B, what you're looking at is my backyard. I did not put these two things together, but either way, obtrusive is probably a good definition of which Linda had mentioned, but not in reference to this earlier. As far as the colors are concerned, currently, this is a Craftsman shingled brown-ish colored house. And I guess it's being proposed to be something in a yellow straw hue, which in a wooded setting, I have a hard time believing that is going to match the oak landscape that supposedly they think they have. There are redwoods around it and oak trees around it. There's nothing straw at all to complement a yellow color. So if you're looking at Photo B, that's what I'm going to be looking at in the future. So I'm in agreement with Randy, a two-story home is something that would look a bit nicer from my perspective. And we completely understand the challenges of this lot, and it's absolutely no surprise why the previous owners have failed to do anything to this place. So I also wanted to reference the comment on sightlines of which the architect's representative had mentioned earlier about the reason why they dropped the height of the building. Well, if you were to look at Photo B, there is no sightline either way. And I understand they're gonna come up and it's not gonna be ideal. But dropping what the original height line was to perhaps increase my view is just not the case. We have no view now. So I'm referencing Photo A and B, letting you know that's what I currently look at. And not so excited about what Photo B could be looked like in the future. Also, understanding parking in our neighborhood. Those of us that live in this town, I believe two spaces will be taken away from the easement or public right-of-way. There currently is absolutely no parking in our neighborhood, so a drastic impact. We also understand, I mean, there is really no way of mitigating how they can get in their house. So I'm just gonna throw that out there, anytime we lose parking in this town is just a bit of a nightmare for the current residents who already don't have parking. And, you know, if you plan to ever have family or friends around, you just, we ask them to park in town and walk up because generally, at that time of evening, there is no parking. So just wanted to share my concerns and views with you, and that'll be all, thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else from the public that would like to speak to this? Okay. All right, so I think what I'll do is we'll bring it back to the commission. If we have specific questions, we can follow up with you. I want to kind of get a sense of where our questions and concerns are. And if... Does anybody want to start?
I... I'll just start on a general note. The information that we're being presented with tonight from a neighbor is extensive and worthy of respectable consideration, and I'm feeling torn not being able to give it that in terms of making a decision here tonight. So I'm just gonna put that out there. And I know, Linda, I know we've talked about this in the past in terms of requiring information ahead of time and how we deal with this. So I'm just putting out there that I am just feeling torn getting into too many specifics without really having been able to look through all of that, so.
Yeah, there've been current court cases that say that the town has to accept information. We used to require it for the packet, which was last Friday. But there've been court cases that have said the town has to take any information anyone wants to submit right up until the meeting time and put it in its own separate folder. If you feel you have too much information to digest tonight, you can ask the applicant if he's willing to agree to... I just want to get the wording right, for the town attorney will be happy with me. You can extend the amount of time with the agreement of the commission and the applicant, an additional 90 days under the Permit Streamlining Act. But he has to agree to it. That would give you time to review the information, him time to review the information, maybe make changes, maybe come back with the same application. And I gave the wording for the extension to the chair there. Do you want me to read it? I mean, you want to see if he's willing to?
Well, I think it's important to understand the temperature of the commission.
Yeah.
You know, I think we're... Short on questions doesn't mean short on concerns, but I think I'd like to hear what folks have... What issues are, because I think if we are gonna do this, I think we also want to try to elicit what are the concerns and how, if we can identify them, at least we know what the applicant would know what we're actually asking for as opposed to just saying, "We want more time," and come back in a month and the same thing, we have the same discussion. So I do, we've had public comment, we've heard from the applicant and the neighbors. So I think it's important that we at least identify some of the concerns if we have those. You know, I think they're warranted, I think as everyone has said, this is a really tough, unique site. That neighborhood is a really interesting, tough, unique access, very tight, everything, tight quarters. So you've got to be able to get along with your neighbors.
Could I add just a couple clarifications at this time?
Yeah, if you, because I think what I did is I handed you the thing and the neighbors did make... Basically, it was read from, so I think that was helpful. So if there are any specifics to the photos, it would be great.
I took a very quick look at it, as I'm sure you have. One kind of minor clarification is just that the height is actually only increasing nine and a half feet. We have made an effort to really reduce that as much as possible. And it's also worth noting that the other adjacent properties along Roca to the south are extremely tall relative to these other properties on the other side. So part of what we're also trying to do is kind of navigate between those different height conditions as well. And those are up at the top of Roca and they tower above this site. And that's something that, you know, it's an existing condition, so we just have to work with it. But to move the site itself would, you know, be too much of a cost, I think, and sort of beyond the pale in terms of, it would no longer be a renovation at that point, which is a completely different scale of project. So we're trying to work with the existing footprint and trying to work with that sloping site. And at the uppermost end, we're really only about 12 or 13 feet from grade at the facade that's closest to Roca. There's a little retaining wall and a walkway underneath, so it looks like it's about 22 and a half feet, but relative to the grade that it's overhanging, it's actually quite close to the existing grade. And I do have compassion for the folks who will have some impacts on their existing buildings. I think it's worth also taking the long view that if sites are imbued with a certain development right, that there's no way for us to know that the sites around us aren't later gonna be developed or expanded as well as, you know, many smaller houses often are in a way that's comparable with what's happening, what we're proposing here, or even more so. So given the existing structure that's there, we want to try and be respectful of it, but we're also trying to work with the existing footprint and the potential on other sites as well.
And I think it's important, and I think we've, I've been on the commission for eight years, and I think it's important to listen and it's important to hear. And I think, I heard opportunity compromise, I don't know if the five minutes of you being able to look at it, us having that presentation, part of what we are trying to deal with is that transitional condition. Obviously, this is, on the slope, it's transitional, it's, any development within an established neighborhood is transitional. And I think sometimes time, the long view of being able to discuss it. It sounds like what was presented to us by the neighbors, you haven't seen. I don't know if any of those discussions have been had. Typically, that's what happens, that's part of what this process is, it's to facilitate discussion so that the neighbors hear the concerns, and maybe there are some things that can be addressed. When I see in this, what was handed out, that the parking structure is actually gonna have the most direct impact to Mr. and Mrs. Engel, but they're okay with it because they understand that's necessary, there's compromise there, they're willing to accept. So it's having those conversations, whether it's at a planning commission meeting or in between planning commission meetings, and trying to figure out what are some things that can be done to resolve. It's not saying no, it's not saying absolutely not. I think if we as a commissioner are asking, "Is there an opportunity to extend?" I think that allows for a discussion to try to address some of the concerns. It doesn't mean no, it means explore the opportunity in a way that might also work a little bit better. There is compromise, that's what this is all about, is compromise, but how do we get there? So I think what Ms. Neal presented is an option to consider if the applicant, if you as an applicant are willing to extend the, under the Permit Streamlining Act, I think we wouldn't have to wait 90 days. I think what I'm hearing is that it's important to make sure that some of the concerns that have been raised tonight can be addressed, whether they're design changes or reasons why they can't be changed. I think it's important to hear those things. It's important for the neighbors to hear those as well. I didn't hear anybody saying, "Move the building, put it in a different place." I heard height, I heard mass, color, you know, those kinds of things. So I don't know if you're... If you or your Mr. Hakales would be willing to extend, but I think it's not waiting 90 days, I think, I don't know what you think in terms of timing.
Well, what you guys have done in the past is you guys have asked your questions and indicated what your concerns are, and then asked the applicant again after they hear your thoughts on it. Are they willing to agree to the extension? Because if it appears that all the commissioners or majority of the commissioners have a lot of concerns, it sometimes behooves the applicant to agree to the continuance to try to address some of them.
Right.
So that's what I would recommend doing, is discussing it amongst yourselves and getting all your questions answered, and then indicating whether or not you do have concerns.
So in front of the commission, for the commission, I think it's good to sort of break it up the way we usually do, is the structure and the development right, and then the design review portion. I think we heard most comments on the development side, but there were actually a couple of comments on the colors and things like that, so. Yeah, so, well, I know you're the, so you're the actual owner, okay. How about, do you want to listen to some of the discussion we have? And then, I certainly am okay, but I want to make sure that we actually get out some of our comments and ideas, and we'll see where we are.
Well, as happens a lot, we read the staff report and we come up with our own concerns without hearing the public. Mine was, I was thinking of adding, the Earth Science Consultants' report, I think is really excellent. And so one of my recommendations was going to be here to add a condition that the recommendations in that report be taken seriously into consideration. And then the neighbors, the Engels came up with this, actually well-put-together booklet, I must say. And it does show a lot of evidence in it. But some of that evidence isn't exactly negative to the project. For example, there's a picture in here of 107 Taylor Drive, which shows a huge, I don't know, multi-story red building that stands out quite starkly in the neighborhood. Another one is 39 Geary, which is similarly a stark, large house with a different kind of coloration than you might normally see. And 32 Geary, which is perhaps in the neighborhood. So that then puts the question to me, and I frankly could, you know, could use a little more time to digest this. And there was the other question about whether there was a north-facing elevation or whether it was an east-facing elevation. I'd like to get that point clarified, actually.
That was just the typical use of Project North. So while the building is, it's actually the corner that's pointed north, we choose one side basically to be the north, east, west, south. And so Project North is a little bit rotated from true north in terms of how the elevations are labeled. That's all that is.
Okay.
So what's relabeled as north is technically northwest, but it's simpler to just call it north. It's a stick-and-drawing convention.
Okay, so what I'm saying, my feeling is that I had, you know, some concerns about, from the Earth Science Consultants' point of view, but if that were taken into consideration, that sounded good until the Engels brought up these issues. And now I kind of feel like I need some time to look at this personally, that's...
I'd just like to comment that I think that the car deck's a good idea and that's in the proper location. I mean, that existing easement is narrow and there's other properties accessing it. So I think that that's a positive thing. I think it's a good idea to use the existing footprint to rebuild the house. The existing house has reached its useful life, and if there's elements that you can reuse, that's good. And it's good that you're removing some of these little side, as you call it, appendages that are within the setbacks so that you have a house that fits more into the setbacks, good. But I do have a concern about the decks. It does raise, you know, building code and fire issues. It looks like the decks could be reduced and you could still, it looks like they could still be a usable size. So I'd like to see you, if you could try to implement that.
Just to jump in, sorry to interrupt, we did appreciate Linda's concern in the staff report, and we're happy to move those decks three feet back.
Yeah, the decks are gonna move three feet.
Okay, great. You know, this is another example of one of the items that we're working on on our action list about, you know, number of floors, stories, is it, do we consider it an upslope? Is it the downslope? So I'm kind of struggling with that kind of issue right now. I'd like a little more time to kind of resolve that and how it would be appropriate at this location.
Thanks.
Some of the concerns that I have about the...
Some of the concerns that I have about the project were brought up in the neighbors' booklet, but I'm going to start by saying, I really like what you've done with this house. I think the design is really efficient and simple and clean and, and really nice. But I'm feeling a little bit like the house is sight blind. It's, it's a great, it's a great house, great architecture, but when it hits the ground here, it feels a little off to me. I'm a landscape architect, so I'm kind of sensitive to sight. And yes, there are examples in this book, but Roca and Geary have a really varied sun shade regime. You know, you're in the, you're in the deep woods where you guys are, and, but where these larger houses are down on the lower slopes where it's a lot sunnier. And so those brighter houses down there seem to sit well in that. But within a redwood grove, I feel like, I hea, I heard what you said, but I'm not buying it. So the, the color's an issue, and I, I think that the representation of it in here is a little rough because this doesn't have any shadows on it. This doesn't have any articulation. This is a really, this is not what you're going to be looking at. However, I think that there's a happy medium. And I think what Brandon was saying about having those conversations and trying to find that medium place is an important exercise.
I think that the color is something we'd be happy to, to work with the neighbors on. It's something easy to be flexible about.
Right. So I guess you need that opportunity. But with, with our comments in mind so that you have the benefit of that knowledge. And the other thing that I, I found perplexing about the site, and I'm sure you did too, is that it is in, it's, it is the transition lot between those upslope buildings and the downslope buildings. And you have both. And so there's, there's really no way for you to be able to solve that problem on this site. Using the existing footprint is a great way to minimize your impact on the site. I think the car deck, I understand about parking up there. I've had clients out there and it's a really tough place to park. But I think the car deck solves some of that as much as makes it worse. I don't, I don't see it as taking away parking. So I don't know that that's an issue. But the, so those are just sort of my rambling thoughts about where we are right now. And it'd be, it'd be nice to have a little more time if you're willing to do that. And I think we could probably do it within, you know, the next meeting. They're not, we're not asking major architectural changes. I just feel like we, I, I feel like we would be a lot more comfortable moving forward with it if, if there were ways to mitigate those things that really jump off the page, at least to me. So that's my take.
Yeah, I don't have a, I agree with a lot of what's been said here. And I think I just wanted to reiterate what our chair said, which is often our role up here is kind of like an ombudsman and a mediator in terms of bringing folks together who may not have had the opportunity to have discussions. And I think that in hearing what you all have said, I think the way in which the neighbors have presented their information and, and hearing from them, I'm very confident that we have two willing parties who are open to talking to each other and to work on things. So that's a real positive to me. That, you know, the neighbors came forward not with, you know, pitchforks and we're going to block this or, you know, angry, just saying we've got issues. We can accept this. We might want this changed. So I think it is an opportunity to work with neighbors a little bit more on. And, and the things that I'm hearing that to work on are the perception of mass. And I use the word perception because I don't know that you need to necessarily change very much the structure. But again, things like colors or treatments might change the perception of mass. I'm squinting my eyes and trying to imagine. The deck issue with the solid, again, only puts it in the wrong direction for me. Because if you have to create solid railings instead of, I think what you're trying to do with the non-solid railings is lighten up the sense of mass. So if you have to then go back and make those solid railings, that's going to go in the wrong direction. So I don't quite know how you will, how to deal with that, whether it's reducing the decks or what the, what that solution is. So I think working with, with, with that mass issue with the neighbors, and I don't, I hesitate to try. Sometimes we can solve things here, right here, like we had a project in front of us and it was one window. And we talked about, you know, making it opaque or moving it slightly. And we can usually work on those kinds of small little things. And do you agree? Do you agree? Great. We done. We fixed the small window thing. This feels like there's a li, a little bit more than that that might go on that doesn't necessarily, couldn't necessarily be done tonight. So that's feeling difficult for me in terms of it. And the only other question that I have or thing that came to my mind that we see sometimes with the design of this in terms of the first, what the uses on the different floors, and the reason that I did ask about that first floor having a separate entrance and being a utility room with a bathroom and an office is a potential for a second unit?
What?
And there is deed, so I was going to ask, there are deed restrictions that clearly state-
Right now, the utility room is separated by a wall from the, the room and the bathroom, but it wouldn't be very difficult to put a door through. So yes, we, we're concerned about that as well.
And the access to that from the other stories is open or is there like a door?
No, they're removing the stairway because the floor plan is just so tight. There, there's a real funky stairway right now that connects that lower area to the first. It doesn't meet any codes. It really doesn't work. And so they're removing that and-
So then the access is outside?
From outside.
So it is really a separate?
Right.
The way that it's being designed is not as an integrated part of the house where you go from the kitchen down to your office?
Correct.
Or go from the kitchen down to your utility room. You have to go outside in the rain to get your laundry or whatever kind of thing.
Right, correct.
So then I would, so then there is a deed restriction that says?
I think I put it in there, didn't I? Yes, I did. Okay.
Yeah, and we, we have no problem meeting the deed restriction. That's not a problem.
Okay. So I, I do think that we've identified a number of the concerns we have. And, and, you know, we, we've done this a number of times where we're, we're comfortable making decisions, but I think we want to give an opportunity for you to work with the neighbors and, and come back to us and say, you know, these are the things we could address. This is why we couldn't address some things. It, it's not always, everything has to change. And, and I guess my take, and I've probably used this too many times in other places, I don't feel like this right now is ripe for decision. I don't think that you guys are far off. And I think there are willing parties to talk about it. But I think if we're pushed to make a decision tonight, it might be a tough decision. That might not go any way that some people like. So at least that's my perspective. I wouldn't vote for it right now. That doesn't mean that I, I, I agree. I think this is a really tough site. It's a really interesting site. And I think there's lots of opportunity. It's just important to have the dialogue and the discussion. And if there's no resolution to it, that's okay. But we've given an opportunity for that. So.
So you don't have to agree to, to go along with the extension. You can ask for a decision tonight if you want a decision tonight.
No, I, I've been living in town for a year and a half. I bought the property about a year and a half ago. And it's been a very slow process, but it is what it is. So now take as much time as you need. I, I rent a very comfortable place in town and we'll just take as long as it's going to take.
So, so I think what is important to understand is it's not how long it takes us. We're willing to hear this next month if you're able to have the discussions, make the revisions, or, or have explanations why you can't make changes. So that, so it's not, we, we have to ask for permission under the Permit Streamlining Act. That's, that's what we're asking if you're willing to, to do that. It doesn't mean that we're, it's, it's as fast as you are able to address some of these ideas and thoughts and bring it back to staff.
The Permit Streamlining Act allows an exten, extension with mutual agreement of 90 days. If you can, our next meeting is September, what did I say, 18th? They can continue it to that date. And if you can work it all out and get all the information to us, you just, you've met, this is what you were able to agree upon. You're still not able, you know, let us know what the outcome of the meetings were. We need it the week before the meeting.
I, I mean, I'm-
We could get you on September. So.
Sure.
I think that sounds great. We appreciate the, the opportunity to, to talk more with the neighbors. We did have some initial discussions, but it was quite a long time ago, given the, the pace of this project. So I think it's always good to have an opportunity to reconnect. And sometimes people come out of the woodwork a little more later in the game. And so we're happy to have that opportunity to, to work with the neighbors and, and really, Tim's intention to, to be a, a positive part of the neighborhood. So that's, that's definitely in line with our goals.
Okay, that's really great. I mean, I just want to say that some of the things we've heard over at least my, my first year of, of being a commissioner are neighbors getting together and making, you know, talking, coming up with solutions themselves, and then presenting those solutions in the plans and to us. And then it sounds good. Sometimes you just can't agree. But we've had people change the color of their houses because of neighbors. We've had people actually lower the roof line of the plans because the neighbors were concerned, frost windows, move windows or eliminate them. And so those are the kinds of things people do on a regular basis because Fairfax people want to get along. And, and we're sure you, you can work things out.
Can, can, can I add just a general direction, overall impression of, of this, which I should have maybe done at the beginning? I walked the neighborhood and showed the neighbors the proposed plans. And then as it progressed, there, there was a, a neighbor who objected to the height of the property and sat down with the architect and looked at it and decided to eliminate the garden rooftop, which took about three feet off the site. And I'm not in necessarily married to the color of the house, so that's flexible. But in, in terms of, of, you know, just being forthright, looking at the house as you see it today, it has six-foot-high ceilings, exposed wiring, uneven floors. It was deemed uninhabitable by the city when I purchased it. And we're really trying to do the best we can underneath, underneath these, the trees at the lowest point. Because anything that we were to add to, and since we're basically rebuilding the house, 400 square feet is not a lot. And it's, I think it's, I think the quote that it's greater in square feet than the neighboring house is, I think is a misquote. I think if you go to, to the staff's report, it states what, that is kind of in, in average size of the homes in the neighborhood, according to the staff report.
So, so I think what's important is that you've heard some of the comments that we've raised. You didn't hear, there's discussion about third story, but that, that's a broader discussion about interpretation. What you heard was mass and, and how it's perceived and, and how it looks. I think-
Sure.
We've heard that you're willing to do the setbacks on the decks. That may address the, the, whether you can have railings versus solid rails. So, so those are the kinds of things where it always helps then to be able to see it. And I think those things help. Go ahead.
And just another suggestion that I thought of, echoing, I think some of what Shelby and Shelley is, and some, and I think maybe what the neighbors, with the perception of mass, is that, you know, maybe if you could do a little more to break up the one side, it's all kind of a, a straight wall, there might be some opportunities to maybe set some walls back, you know, some articulation that might help. I mean, I think you proposed a flat roof kind of designed to lower the height, but sometimes a roof sometimes really helps the design of the house. So just some ideas.
You know, I'd also like to add that my neighbor quoted the height to be increased from current to 12 feet. That's not accurate. It's going to be increased nine and a half feet according to the drawings. And the, what the neighbor presented this evening is not a professional drawing, not using the scales that we have. And it's, it certainly looks obtrusive. But how accurate it is, is certainly up to.
So, so I think, I want to make sure that we're able to have productive conversations. I, I would be, and I've, not that we've ever done this. Do we need to adopt this? Or you, it's just being agreed to and then will-
He just needs to sign it.
It's our understanding that the applicant is willing to extend the permit streamline. So we could make a motion to that effect and that we would then be-
Well, you're continuing it.
We're continuing it.
Based on the applicant's agreeing to the extension of 90 days under the Permit Streamlining Act, you're making a motion to continue the application. And I would continue it to a date certain because if they're ready, that's great. If not, we just continue it again if they're not ready.
So I think it sounds like we, we propose to continue it to next, to the next meeting, which is the third Thursday of September, September 18th. And yeah, if it's not ready, then you can talk to staff and they can move it.
So I'll make a motion to continue application 14 dash 31 with the agreement by the applicant and the rest of the planning commission to waive the-
To extend.
To, to waive the permit streamlining.
To extend.
To ex, we're, we're agreeing to continue it with an extension of time pursuant to this Streamlining Act document being signed.
Say it.
I'll second.
Motion and second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None opposed. So we hope to see you next month. And thank you.
Thank you.
I'm going to talk to staff really quick. Can you hand, change, Linda, change the date on it? On the top? All right. So the last item on tonight's agenda is 2000 Sir Francis Drake Boulevard. Did, can I, what's the date on top of your letter?
It's, 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 yeah. Oh, I was pretty guessing.
You'd have something. Okay. Great. Okay. All right. All right. Just double checking. Okay, we're back to item six, 2000 Sir Francis Drake Boulevard, application 14 dash 32.
Okay. So the garage at 2000 Sir Francis Drake Boulevard opened in early 2013. And at the time, their intention was just to have studio space and retail space for a group of artists within the building. But they're finding that they're, they've outgrown the space. And so they are requesting a use permit to use the outdoor space underneath the canopy and a little bit more. It's identified on their site plan by a dotted line to display and store their items that they're, that they have for sale. They are also asking to have a flea market once a month and once a month to have some live music. Based on the times that they're, they're proposing to do these things and the limited number of times per month, we're recommending that you approve the use permit. They, they seem to have adequate parking that complies with our parking ordinance. They're not generating enough traffic on a regular daily basis to make them subject to the traffic permit process. And, and use permits are revocable and you can amend the conditions. So we're recommending that you approve it based on the findings contained in the staff report and subject to the conditions contained in the staff report.
So, anybody have questions?
I have a question about amplified music. And I didn't review the noise ordinance. So if you could clarify for me how we address that.
Well, there, I mean, there, there's limits to the amount of noise you can make. And they are proposing just acoustic music, but it will sometimes be amplified. Any live music is subject to the noise ordinance. And so if they exceed the permitted decibels, the police will be called and the police will go and ask them to turn it down. And, you know, when you review it, if you review it and, and you get enough neighbors saying it's a continual problem, you, you have the ability to eliminate the, the approval for live music. you have the ability to eliminate the approval for live music.
So I'm just kind of driving by it on a regular basis. There are flea markets there. There is sales items out. There are trailers that are display and storage. And I know they're tasteful, and I know they're done in a way that sort of fits into the theme. But I'm just wanting to understand, because the outdoor sale's been going on beyond the... I'm just making a comment.
Yeah, they outgrew the space, and so they started to use it in a manner that wasn't approved by the code. But they have actually been trying for quite a while to get their application complete. And originally, they had a bigger vision of trying to have some food trucks. But they ran into some issues with fire access aisles and the health department and bathrooms. So it's just been, they've been trying to complete the application. And in the meantime, they outgrew their space. So yes, they have been doing the outdoor storage for a while now, and they're trying to get it all legalized.
And so is part of it the trailers as well? Or I guess it's all on the property?
The trailers are used.
I know they're part of the retail.
You can clarify with them, but they do use the trailers to display and sell items. So they're asking to keep the two trailers, and we've recommended that they be limited to the two trailers in the location that they're showing them on the site plan. So...
Okay. Any other questions? All right. We will open it up to the applicant. 9:30. Not too bad tonight, but thanks for waiting.
Is that right? Okay. The flea is, the goal of the flea is to provide local artists and collectors a, not just a place to sell their goods, but to have community. And that's basically what the garage is all about, and the flea is just an extension of that. We've been lucky enough to have some really talented local Marin-based artists asked to play at our space. And so we've invited them to do so. They're here tonight, actually. And Jason can probably address some of those sound issues if you wanted him to. We did get ahead of ourselves, I think. We have, like Lynda said.
Oh, I hope you're good luck.
We've been trying for quite a while. We are a pop-up retail experiment. We are there on the kindness of the Good Earth, as our landlords, as you probably all know. And when the building sat empty for as long as it did, and quite nice worth that, I live four-minute walk from the building, so I knew at all times what was going on around it because I also worked at the old Good Earth. So it was a lot of, I think we're a little bit of an upgrade from that, I hope, even with the trailers, which I find charming, but I... Sorry, I'm not good at this. So they invited us to come into the space and take over the space while the building is still for sale. So we apologize that we are behind on our permissions, but here we are.
So do we have any questions? Go ahead.
I have a question. It's not, so the music use request, is that going to be on a different date in the flea market, or is there going to be music during the flea market?
Yes, we propose that the music, we invite our artists Thursday, Friday, or Saturday night, just one of those nights per month, in between the hours of 6:00 and 9:00 o'clock. The music takes place under the canopy, which creates something of a sound barrier, as do the trailers. We have had them there already, so we know, and we have never had any complaints from either the residents or the police.
Okay.
So I think what Val's saying is that there's a possibility that when they have the flea market on Saturday, right? Sunday. Sunday. Okay, so they won't happen on the same day. No, the Sunday would be the, excuse me, the flea would be the third Sunday of every month.
Right. And the music will be either Thursday, Friday, or Saturday. Okay, and then the other question, at one place in the staff report, it says that flea market's on Saturday, and then it says it's on Sunday, so I'm not clear.
It's Sunday, because we got confused. Some of the older information, it said Saturday, but it is going to be Sunday. The original proposal was for Saturday. It's now for Sunday.
So it's the third Sunday of the month?
Planned so as not to interfere with other markets in Marin.
One of my concerns is having music on a Thursday night till 9:00 p.m. in that area. It's really open. And do you have any plans to somehow buffer the music from neighbors or contain it?
The way it's placed on the lot is already a buffer. It sits, the music, the stage, not a stage, it's a rug, sits underneath the canopy and is, on that side of the building is the old Good Earth, so there's a wall there. I think if anybody was going to have been disturbed, they would have, because we've done it a couple times. And the Bennett House, as you all know, is right behind us. They love us. And then the trailers at the front of the lot also seem to be a buffer. We've never had an issue.
Okay, the other question I have is, do you have any feel for how much traffic would be generated? Or if you feel additional traffic would be generated on the day of the music or the flea markets?
I feel like the traffic is about average for our regular open, the days that were open Wednesday through Sunday. And we have parking in the back. When we have a flea market, we would ask the vendors to all park either at the pavilion or legally somewhere else in Fairfax to leave our back spots open. We have a large amount of foot and bicycle traffic, too. So most of our traffic, our vehicular traffic, comes from people who've never seen us before going to the beach or coming from the beach and stopping. And there's ample parking there in the back and on the side.
Okay. Any other questions? Thank you. If there's anyone from the public who would like, yeah, well, we got someone from the public to speak on this.
Hi, my name's Jason Akko. Just a couple perspectives on the garage. I was one of the people that was driving by with my fiance, and we saw the trailers and the outside everything. And that was what led us to shop there and kind of brought in some dollars for Fairfax. As part of that, I get to help out with the music, too, just kind of on an ad hoc basis as we're working through it. The sound system that they've been using is a 200-watt sound system. So if you think about something like these speakers, it's essentially that. And so we're not talking about something blasting. If you, by comparison, if you walk by the sleeping lady or something like that, it's significantly louder, or parades or something. So we're more talking about, in the same level as you hear coming there, slightly louder. Nothing that would be even sort of heard from the street with the traffic noise. Nothing that's sort of blaring. It's more of an acoustic kind of situation. And just also helping out the economy and community of Fairfax. It's brought in not a traffic-causing problem, but a fair number of people who have said, oh, I've never heard of Fairfax, or I haven't been here in 15, 20 years. Come in, little money there, go have dinner at Sorrell's, go around the town. And it's kind of been a very positive thing, sort of low impact, but welcome to Fairfax and keeping with the community nature here and all the artists and a folk music vibe. And the music's been very low-level, nothing that would bother anybody.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Hi, my name is Kim Turd. I live on Spruce Road. When I saw the garage open, I thought, why didn't I think of that? I was kicking myself. And then I met Val last year, and she was telling me about the idea of the flea market. Another brilliant idea. The flea market gives someone like me, who has these hobbies, where I like to build birdhouses, I might like to repaint some furniture. It gives me an opportunity to unload junk from my house and sell it and make a little bit of extra money to pay some bills. I've met so many people through this conglomerate of people. And it's great. It's inspiring. I am totally behind this. And I think it's great for Fairfax. It brings people in. It captures people off of Sir Francis Drake who are just usually driving right by because they see all this stuff going on. And I have heard the music. And the noise of the traffic, I think it drowns it out because you kind of have to be right there listening to them. It was all acoustic when I was listening to it, and it was great. And it was just a really nice vibe going on. So I really support this, and I would really hope you would support this as well. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. One more.
Not going to talk about housing tonight. I just want to say, I was just going to come for the zoning ordinance when I saw this on the agenda. I live in Fairfax. I live right downtown, behind the bars, which don't bother me. The music is really, really fun. It's really unusual. It's like a great space. The traffic noise is almost so high that you can't hear the music a lot. And what I really like a lot is when I've gone to the music events they have, it's like there's kids playing, there's people of all ages hanging out, having snacks and watching. And it just feels like really friendly and neat and community-oriented in a way that's very open and a little different than some of the other music scenes in town, which are nice, but they're just really different. So I haven't got a chance to go to the flea markets yet. I probably would, but as just a random community member who's wandering by tonight for the planning commission, I really would love to see them be able to try this out legally and, you know, go forward with it because I've found it to be a great community space for me, anyway. So, thanks.
Thank you. One random community member wandering by to come to the meeting. One more than usual, so congratulations. Is there anyone else from the public to speak? Okay. So I'll close the public session. If somebody can turn the light off on that, that'd be great. Bring it back to the commission. I do have two questions for Lynda, staff, Ms. Neal. The flea market, so I'm looking at the conditions. So one of them, we'd have to change the condition, so it's on Saturday, or one Sunday each month, the third Sunday. So that's a standard thing that people can plan on, and that makes sense. We approved a permit for the other part of the former Good Earth for evening events that went until 9:00 or 10:00 o'clock. And it was going to be just completely random. And it makes, it seems to me that one night per month, either Thursday, Friday, or Saturday, is really tough for anyone or to track, to enforce, to maintain, whatever. So I'm comfortable with it, but I think it's so wide open that it's almost like, you know, nobody will ever know. I'm not saying that there shouldn't be music twice a week, twice a month.
Maybe they should pin it down to a certain week of the month, that will occur a certain week on Thursday, Friday, or Saturday?
You know, I think for, again, it's what works for the town in terms of what's manageable, what's enforceable, what is regular.
You know, it would be brought to our attention by complaints. And so I'm okay with it the way it is, open-ended. You know, if they start happening, if it starts happening too much and it starts disrupting people, we will hear about it. And if it occurs, we'll schedule it again for a hearing in front of you, and we can all talk about maybe tightening up that time period or limiting it to a certain week.
Sort of like a pop-up store. It would be a pop-up issue that we address. I do think, I mean, the use is going to change when the museum opens, when the rest of that building is finished, and there's more formality to what's happening.
Yeah, it works right now, but maybe there will be issues after everything gets going on that corner. But for now, I'm okay with it the way it is.
Okay, yeah, I just want to make sure. And then can you explain, under condition seven, it says any sign advertising the flea market is subject to the sign permit ordinance and requires a sign permit, sandwich boards. Signs not complying will be removed. So we're not approving the signs right now, and that might be something that has to come forward.
That's our attempt to let the applicant know that, you know, we understand they're probably going to need some signs. You know, they may need some signs, and they are required to get permits for the signs. And staff doesn't have the authority to approve sandwich board signs, which is the type most flea markets like to use. It has to come before you. They have to identify the locations, the size, you know, what they're going to look like.
So I guess maybe that's an issue for our list, is staff issue permits for sandwich boards? Because does that have to come to the commission?
It has to come to the commission.
Well, that's a good...
Yeah, you can't change the code. That's something we can put on our list.
It's a good point, but you know, sandwich boards can blow away easily in the wind. And this is right at the Sir Francis Drake. We don't want a sandwich board blowing into Sir Francis Drake.
So, but it sounds like...
Something like that has to be, you know, regulated somewhat.
Looked at carefully. And you have to make sure you maintain, you know, accessibility clearances and things. So the problem with sandwich boards is they can move, and people move them. And so that's why I think they make it subject to a public hearing.
So for this, right now, we're not approving any signs?
We're not approving any signs, no.
It's likely that that will be the next time we see all these focuses for signs? Because it seems like that's what you're saying, is a sign permit is necessary for any of the signs, besides the ones that are on the building that are already there?
Correct.
This would be for the little advertising signs.
You know, and they may want to come up with some kind of a permanent sign where they can replace, you know, who's playing. I mean, I don't know. There's ways to do it where you do a permanent sign, but that would be subject to your review and approval.
Yeah, so that was our public service moment of education, that it's not over yet, but...
I had a question about condition five. And that is basically portable accessible toilets should be located behind the building. That would be good. But then it says unless otherwise required by the environmental health or other agency. What I would like to propose adding to that condition is if the portable toilets are located where they may be visible, that the applicant be required to put some kind of fencing around them because it'll look really, I mean, in my opinion, it would look really cheesy to have some portable toilets out there in the open space as people are driving by. That's not what we want in Fairfax, in my opinion.
And it sounds like, though, that this is event-driven portable toilets, not permanent. So they wouldn't be there all the time, 24/7. They would be there the day before the event and remove the day after the event. And I can understand...
We might want to ask the applicant about that, because I wasn't absolutely sure. Okay.
Okay, so as it's worded right now, it's temporary portable toilets, event by event. And there's a space, it sounds like there's a space if...
Yeah, I just wasn't sure if the, you know, there's a requirement that the portables be accessible and have accessible hand washing facilities. So I just wanted to put that section in there, that it's possible environmental health or the fire department might ask those to be moved. I know they were going to have to be in a different location when the food trucks were going in there, but that probably has something to do with proximity to food. So I'm okay with Phil's addition that if they do have to be relocated in a visible location, that they put up some kind of lattice screening or something.
I think I would just be comfortable with saying they need to be screened because I can see a curtain. I mean, there's, if it's really just a temporary thing, there can be some, it doesn't have to be a big structure.
And if they're behind the building, they're fine.
They're good. All right, so screening.
Screening is fine. I have another few things. I mean, this condition 10, any planters associated with the business shall be maintained in acceptable condition. That is good, but what, I don't see any necessarily in the plan. So I'm kind of wondering whether there's some proposed in the application, planters?
Well, they originally had some planters, but now I don't know if they're still there or if they're just screened by all the stuff that's out there. I'm sorry, they're what? So they do have planters? Yeah, they're just, what happens sometimes is people, when they first start out, they do planters that look beautiful, and then they let them get all ratty and weed-covered. So all this condition says is that, you know, if you are going to have planters, you'll maintain them in an attractive fashion. You won't let, you know, people put skulls in them. I don't know, you know, let the plants all die, right?
It's a drought. It's okay. Just pull them out and keep it clean, then.
Yeah. If you're going to let things die, pull them out.
Okay, and the only other condition or comment, I think we need to eliminate condition 14 because it's repetitive of condition nine. But other than that, if, you know, this is, the site is a funky, cute, old garage, gas station, what have you. And it would be good if it were maintained in its sort of, whatever this is, 60s or 50s condition, so that it continues to look like a funky, cute, old gas station, but in good shape. cute, old gas station, but in good shape. In other words, the paint, et cetera. So, number 13, "Any changes made to the exterior of the building shall comply with the design review regulations." So, I mean, what I'm, what I'm saying is maybe we could say it be maintained in that old gas station look and feel, which should be, you know, applicants should be kind of happy about that idea. So, sort of a friendly amendment, maybe, but language for number 13.
I guess I would feel more comfortable just leaving it as it is, because that would be a different application. And I don't want to set requirements for like...
If they changed the architecture to take it away from that look, they would be coming before you for a design review.
Right. And this is a business that doesn't own the property. I think it's a big, we're talking about the business here, not, not the structure.
No, I, I understand. Okay, well, I guess that kind of depends on their lease, too.
Yeah.
So, that's my thought there, though.
Because then we're saying it's a gas station. So, is it a gas station? I don't want to bring that up. Okay, so, I just, are there any other? I was going to go through and just summarize. Go for it.
I was just going to say, I, I love the use of that building. I've been to the flea market a couple of times. It's, it's a great to have that event in town. I think it totally fits with Fairfax, and it's a fantastic reuse. And I love the fact that you took the garage sign from the building over here and moved it over there. I think the idea of enhancing the idea of it being almost a, a community event, not just a retail store, is a great addition to our community. So, I, I really support that we're looking at having a, a use permit for this use. And I would be, you know, I'd be happy to say that the flea market is approved for one weekend day each month, and not necessarily nail it down to a, a specific day, partially because their neighbors adjacent are still moving in, and they may want to coordinate it and move it to a Saturday, so it's on the same day as an event that's going on in that cheese vegan place next door. Or they may want to do it in a different day. I don't know. I think just, I'm comfortable with saying just one day a month, and not having to be specific on Saturday or Sunday.
I hate to rain on the parade, but I'm, I'm just concerned, because it was routed to the different agencies, like the police department and the fire department, thinking that it was only going to be one...
It is still only one day, and it has to, we have to edit it either way, so that it says Sunday instead of Saturday.
They may, they, I, I would feel if it was just going to be open-ended, where they could move it, Saturday, Sunday, Saturday, Sunday, Saturday, Sunday, I would, I would feel like they would have to have a right to look at it again.
Okay. We can leave it. We can leave it. Now, they...
I mean, that's what they're asking for. If they, if they find out that it's not working, you know, we can reschedule it, and they could...
Okay.
We can run it by police and fire and make sure...
Okay. I didn't, okay. And other than that, you know, I'm, the only other thing that I was thinking about was approving, appro, I mean, I see it as kind of like an open-air houseware artist market. Flea market can sometimes be interpreted as kind of like garage, like, I'm going to say garage sale. It's called a garage, but different than what it is. It's, it's a little bit more than just people pulling stuff out of their, pulling stuff out of their, you know, closets and having a stall and selling their old stuff. It's value-added on top of the recycled stuff. And the only reason I'm bringing this up is because I think, yeah, I've seen in other communities as well, an issue with having just kind of crappy, crappy flea market things right on your main street. So, I wouldn't, so I was thinking of calling it, you know, an, an open-air artist's market, or something like that, as opposed to calling it a flea market. It's the exact same thing that's happening there, but it just differentiates it a little bit, so that it doesn't evolve either with new owners or a transition into something else, because I love what it is, and I know that's your intention, is to have kind of artisan recycled stuff, not just stuff. Even, and there's even some booths there that are more stuffy stuff, but it, I'd be a little less hesitant to approve this if it was simply what you think of as like the flea markets that happen over, you know, yeah. So, I don't know how other people think about that, but I was thinking, I didn't want to set a precedent and limit it to that.
I'm comfortable. I like the idea, but if you have a specific concern...
I want to speak to both those things. We, we all love the name Fairfax Flea. But it, we, we brought, we came to that on the heels of my own, my partner and I doing a year and a half worth of shows ourselves. And one of our favorite is the Treasure Island Flea, which has brought a new meaning to the word flea. And I think that's happening all over the Bay Area. That's one piece. The other piece is, I, I look at every application. I'm the one that's going to, you know, say yea or nay. And I have ruled people out for being rummage saley, garage saley. I've asked, we've, it's happened, and I, it's junky, and I don't like the lot to look like that. So, it, that's not going to get past me, anyway.
I think, I think we're in agreement on it, on the concept. It's just...
I have an idea. How about this? For condition four, "The flea market is an open-air artist market and is approved for..." So, it's just, we're just describing it as we understand it.
Perfect.
All right. Okay, so, what I've heard is, we'll leave condition three. Staff is comfortable with it, with the one of three nights, once a month. Item, "Condition four, the flea market is an open-air artist market, the flea market, comma, an open-air artist market is approved for the third Sunday of each month?" Item five, I think we can almost just add "with screening" to the end of the last sentence.
Yeah, that, that's a good idea.
And just keep it simple. And then, I think all of the other items, we're dropping condition 14. And we've had educational discussions about some of the other ones, but I didn't hear that we were changing them.
Well, before we leave the conditions, I did have a couple of other thoughts. One is, we could specify that there should be no food trucks.
It is. On a, well, item six, "This use permit is not approved for any food sales."
Right, okay.
"The sale of any food from the site will require approval of a modification of this permit." We have somebody else first.
And then, since it was brought up that they have a 200-watt sound system, do you think it'd be appropriate, I'm just throwing this out for discussion, is to limit it to that, to limit amplified music to a 200-watt sound system?
You know, I'm comfortable with, I mean, we could say limited amplified. I, I do think, I agree with, with Linda, that if there's a concern that's, we're going to hear it, I have trouble prescribing it. Go ahead.
My comment that I wanted to add was, in relation to number three, if we could add what Linda suggests, stated, that if there are complaints or whatever, then we would have to... Yeah, we'd need to review. At first, I thought perhaps maybe we may have to, I, maybe do it on a trial basis, but it's, I don't think there's going to be a problem, so I don't think we need to say it's going to be a trial basis. But I think that we should add the language that if there, if there are complaints, yes.
Yeah. And as we've learned, that's, it's inherent, but it's fine to be explicit about it. All right, now, do you have a comment? No?
I like the idea of food trucks. Not for this site, and I see that it doesn't work, but I would encourage you maybe to talk to your neighbors to the north, and maybe that big, huge parking lot, you might be able to coordinate with the bike shop and other folks.
My neighbor to the north is the only person in Fairfax that doesn't like the garage. I would love to do that.
I just want to weigh in, saying I, I love what's going on there. And we...
Thank you all for your support. It means a lot.
Totally support what's going on. And we walk downtown and go to the flea, and it's really fun.
Thank you.
We did all our Christmas shopping there this year. And...
Pardon me?
We did all our Christmas shopping there this year, and my kids love it. And so, I just wanted to give that shout-out.
Thank you.
And to make a request that you take over the gas station across the street, too.
Would love to.
Because that's really, you know, north bounce out, that kind of thing. So, thank you for enlivening that corner. It's a really great addition to town.
Appreciate it.
That would take care of the planter issue over there. We're having way too much fun. I, I just want to say, I remember a few years ago talking about that part of town as being dead, and how do you get people there? And how do you sort of, everybody wants to be at the, this was when Good Earth was moving. And it's like, where's everybody going to go? And how's it going to work? And so, there you go. It, it's, it's worked, and it's, it's vibrant, and that's great.
We like to be the front porch of Fairfax.
There you go.
Come hang out.
Anybody want to make a motion with the amended ideas?
I'll make a motion. I haven't made any motions tonight. I'd like to make a motion to approve application 14-32 with the amendments to the conditions.
Are you okay as described?
Yeah, with the amendments to the conditions.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
All right. We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None opposed? There is a 10-day appeal period that, that somebody may be able to bring to town council or to town staff. It's a 10 days, $500 fee. I don't expect it here, but just be aware. And talk to Linda about signs. That's my, that's my PSA for the night.
All right. Thank you.
All right, thanks. I've hidden my agenda. The last item we have is the July minutes, which in today, in this week's packet got buried, although I can honestly say I wasn't there. And I know I watched the last five minutes, because you had an only an hour-long meeting, so I missed the whole meeting. I meant to watch it, as I was watching, you know, trying to get the kids to bed. So, are there comments, or...
My name is misspelled. EY.
And, and it was a great futuristic meeting, July 17th, 2015. So, I guess I don't have to worry about next year. We're covered. And we hate, we hate to be that particular. Any other comments? I was being serious. I turned it on, and it was just ending. I was like, darn it.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes from July 17th, 2014.
I'll second that.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All abstained, since I wasn't there. But there's enough of us to pass it. All right. And the last item is the discussion item, zoning ordinance. I think this is just kind of the working list. Do your...
There was something about the sign...
Yeah, there was something we were going to add.
Sign ordinance.
Oh, about staff being able to have more ability to approve things. Okay, I'll add that.
Yeah, make it really general like that.
I want to, I want to thank you for going through the...
I'll be power crazed.
That's right.
I want to thank you for going through the effort of, of adding section numbers. That, that's very helpful.
And we'll, we'll make that standard. You know, if you add something, we'll add the section numbers.
That's great.
Because that's a great idea.
Yeah.
It makes it easier for people to find it.
Thank you.
I don't know, based on the other application we had today versus the upslope and downslope height requirements, is that on the list?
Review those.
That might be something to, that might be worthy of discussion.
Yeah, we have, we have talked about that before. We've had a couple of applications that the, it was on the upslope or the downslope, and it made it kind of awkward about how it was approved. So, I remember that.
And it's really awkward when your lot has an upslope and a downslope access.
And what we, what staff has done, since it's not really clear from the code, we, we consider the access how you normally access the house. That's, that's the, so right now, this, that house at 48 is on an upslope, because it takes access off of a little alley. But when they have the parking, it will then become downslope.
I haven't heard that interpretation before, but that's interesting to hear.
We always ask, I ask, but where's your front door?
I understood it as the address, the, where your address is, because that's different.
But for something like this, where they're changing the configuration?
Then it's different.
Like, if someone comes to me, some of our lots are so odd, people will want to know, well, what's my front property line? What's my side property line? My first question to them is, where's your front door? How do you get into your house? And that's where we usually start, because some of the lots are, some lots are surrounded on four sides by road. You know, they're really odd. So, think about it.
Okay. And, and I do think, as these are, it sounds like there's going to be a lot more of the kinds of deliberations we had on the general plan. And so, when we actually do get into some of the, the zoning issues, that, that's where a lot of this list will actually come right into play. So, go ahead.
I actually have a specific request for staff around the subsequent steps related to both the general plan and the rezoning. Once, once the errors, my understanding is that once the errors and issues, once the errors have been corrected in the general plan, that it was the intention of the council to then move forward with appropriate rezoning, in terms of redesignating zones, and then coming in with appropriate changes to the zoning language. So, my, and I'm, I'm still not exactly clear on the process, first A, then B, then C, and a timeframe for that, because I also know that we have a general plan housing element revision that has to be done by Jan, December 31st. So, that has to be rolled into this whole process as well. And I'm still a little, and I know we've got forums coming up. And so, I'm still a little bit fuzzy on, on my understanding was, we fix the errors and the issue, the errors in it, and then we start rezoning, not we open the door up for making changes, because we have to do something also. So, what I'm, my...
I'm fuzzy, too. So, would you like me to ask the planning director to get a timeline and a clear, for the next agenda? We'll put it on the agenda?
So, my...
How they see it going forward in a timeline?
I would like to see what approvals, when, by whom, with an, understanding this is a projected timeline. But for example, general plan amendments come to us once, go to the, go to the town council once. But rezoning ordinance, you know, zoning and ordinance things have to go to us once, and then go through two hearings there. So, there's going to be a series of quite a number of meetings to approve things.
Yeah, and how it's all going to work together.
And I'm just wondering how that's all going to work. And it'd be really nice to have it literally just itemized out on a timeline of those, both general plan changes and rezoning ordinance actions.
I will, um, take your request forward to him, and then let him know that's what you're looking for.
Yeah, I think that's...
It's kind of hard, because you know, everything is going to public hearings, and they can have a vision of how they want it to work. And I get it's a draft, and I get it might change, but at least, yeah, based on, based on the action that the council took, what they're envisioning for how it's all going to go forward with time.
The only thing I might add to that, and I think that would be really helpful to have, is, the only thing I would add to that is, if there's any chance that we can sort of save the certification that we had gotten, what the timeline, sort of another column, maybe, would be to, to get that done within.
Okay. So, make sure that he's ready for that. I'm sure he will be if they're talking about it on the third. And then the last thing, I'm going to ask really quickly, would you like all of 48 Gary back? Do you think, I think, so we'll, let's separate that out just so it's easier for you.
Well, I, I'll tell you, I, you guys don't have to do anything. I grab all the plans, just in, all, every plan, just in case someone appeals, you know? That way, the applicants don't have to try to regenerate plans, so...
All right. But keep your notes, so that they're fresh, because hopefully we're using them next month. Okay. Anything else?
Just the comment that I wanted to say about the plans earlier in the big unwieldened set, is that one idea is that we can use a projector, if, if you're able to get the, usually, you can get them in PDF format from the applicant, or the designer can create a PDF... a PDF file, that then you could-
Yeah, I, I, I would like to agendize this, because I have applicants that are little homeowners, like the lady at 139 Lansdale. And I know it sounds like it should, in this day and age, it should be really easy to get this stuff out of people, but not everybody is that familiar with stuff.
Yeah, if it's, if it's a 50% remodel, or-
Yeah, so let's talk about it, and you guys can give me some parameters, and I can tell you my, the difficulties that I have. Because I know the licensed architects, they're not going to have a problem with that. But I have to be able to, to work with these homeowners that are just, you know, on a shoestring, fixed income. So, I need more direction from you.
Well, and I-
So, I'll put it on the agenda.
And just, because I think, maybe half of us were here, we used to get the scaled version, they were the smaller versions. They were like 11 by 17, but they weren't scaled properly. And there were a few issues with, like, the, the measurements didn't, didn't look right.
It's almost, but it's not.
Yeah, so that, so that's where we ended up with the full sheets. And so, that was the main concern that I remember. But I agree, we should have a full discussion about it. Figure out what's best now.
Good, it would be good if we could project them on a screen.
But everybody's looking at different pages.
I will just tell you, I met with one of our applicants tonight, probably six or seven times. We started out with some kind of a CAD program from England that, I mean, it takes a lot of time with some of these people. And if I had to hit them with a, give me this electronically, it would just not work.
We'll figure it out.
But yeah, I mean, you could do what you do with story polls. I'll just let you think about this. 50% remodel, second stories, 50% remodels, and new homes, you, you know, you're usually dealing with an architect. They don't have a problem with that. But like, you know, in closing a porch on a flat lot. So, just give us clear direction, and we'll do it.
All right. I think we're ready to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much.